Okay, okay, folks, so we can go ahead and get started. We have a quorum. I would like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting in the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the present pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory or required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order for the approval of closed session agenda. Ms. Zaragapour.
Dr. Latif, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jessie seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Did she put it up? Did you put it up?
She didn't.
I didn't vote.
I know.
Okay, I'm voting yes.
I got you.
Okay, moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
The vote is six yes.
Okay.
Two not present vote. Willken Williams' motion passed.
Okay, motion is enter closed session. Motion is in order.
Dr. Latif, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712 that the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with Division Council and staff contracts, performance evaluation, appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, and appointees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8, and to dispense of the attendance of the superintendent as necessary as provided by Virginia Code Section 22.1-69. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 2 and 8. And three, to receive information and discuss with Division Council and staff actual or probable litigation in specific legal matters involving specific staff and students and changes in the law applicable to the conduct of public meetings under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 1, 2, 7, and 8.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall. Ms. Wall seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. It's not showing up on my screen. That's fine. Yeah, I'm a yes.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Williams' motion passed.
Okay. At this time, the Prince William County School Board will enter closed session. Return to open session approximately 7 o'clock. The Prince William County School Board will now enter, now returning to open session from closed session. Closed session certifications in order. Ms. Zaragapour.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of June 16, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters where, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to closed session. Action items and motions in order. Ms. Zaragapour.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next is the approval on religious exemptions. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemption in case numbers RE 20-29, 30, 31, and 32.
Do I have a second? Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jessie makes the second. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory or required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. We're very excited this evening, folks, that we have Boy Scout Troop 964, 964, here to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Gentlemen, please come up to the podium and we'll ask everyone to stand up. The flag is over here to the right, and then we'll ask you all to lead us in the pledge.
Please take off any nonreligious headwear and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. I am Evan Provincio from Saunders Middle School.
I am Troy Hopkins from Saunders Middle School.
I am Pranav Karmakar from Troop 964, and I'm from Porter Traditional.
I'm Rocky, and I'm from PAC 289, and I go to Henderson Elementary.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and it's exciting to have our first Boy Scout troop in over 15 months. So, very exciting. All right, folks, next we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Zaragapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
You miss?
I just want the Mr. Wallenford to, on the 2, 1208, I'm sorry, the, I have to look at the numbers, 1209 and 1205, just to kind of, for the public to, under five, the incumbents of carryover, how much carryover, and just explain that for the public's knowledge. And under 1209, end of the year funds.
So, Ms. Jessie, currently we're just approving the agenda. We're not approving consent agenda at this point? That'll be the next vote?
I thought we were approving the consent agenda.
This is the public meeting agenda first?
I'm sorry.
The next one then we'll go, then we'll go.
Sorry, my, my.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? This is just approving the public meeting agenda. Okay, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we move to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Zaragapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Ms. Jessie.
1209 and 1205. If Mr. Wallenford could just give us a little bit more insight on that. I don't want it moved. I just want the public to know.
Good evening, Ms. Wallenford.
I have to say, this is odd. I haven't been here in a year and a half.
Excellent, welcome.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. Mrs. Jessie, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your, I couldn't hear your question. Was it 1209?
Carryover, I just wanted to, for an explanation for the public because it does involve funds. Do, could you give the public an idea of what we're talking about when we're talking about carryover and how much we're talking about? And in 1209, the same thing, end of the year funds.
Okay.
Just an explanation for the public.
Okay, thank you for the question, Mrs. Jessie. The carryover, the encumbrance carryover is an item that we do every year. Typically, those encumbrances that are made before the end of the year are taken to the County Board of Supervisors, and they approve those while you are out during the summer. So, we bring this item, there are no dollars associated to it right now because we don't know what the dollars are. That doesn't happen until the end of the fiscal year. So, typically, late in the summer, sometimes early in September, we'll actually take those numbers to the County Board of Supervisors, and they will adopt that encumbrance carryover. And that is purchase orders that are made at the end of the year that haven't been delivered on or paid for yet.
But we don't have any idea how much it is at this point in time.
No, ma'am, we don't. We haven't reached the end of the fiscal year yet, and we'll know that number sometime in early July.
Okay.
So, the second item was, that you asked about, Mrs. Jessie, was year-end funds. Typically, earlier in the year, I would bring forward to this board an item that says, here is the balance we expect to have, our budgetary balance at the end of the fiscal year, as a result of operations. We've typically brought that forward in end of third quarter roughly. This year, one of the things that we stated was, we were going to wait until we saw what happened through operations through the end of the year because of enrollment concerns, and then there was conversation about what we would do with those funds, maybe in the form of salary adjustment or other items. So typically, what we would do is bring this forward earlier. We're bringing it forward tonight. And Jason, could we see that slide? There is a slide attached to that item, so that I can refer to the numbers, please. What you see there are two or three items that staff recommends we spend those funds on. One of those was, and I don't have the slide in front of me, one of those items was 300 megahertz radio replacements. That's something that we typically do every year, to the extent, thank you, Mr. Iman.
Anytime.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, the available balance at the end of the year, my forecast or estimate, is for $36,900,000. That's a pretty large number, and we can talk about that in a minute. Lighting at Woodbridge High School tennis courts, $375,000. That's an item that we would like to fund with those year-end funds. The 300 megahertz systems, again, is something that we have a sinking fund, and we've been saving $333,000 on an annual basis for several years now. We expect that those, the replacement of those radio systems will be in the range of $3 to $5 million. And then, the final item that you see on that slide is a Bermuda turf field, a replacement of the turf at Ripon Middle School, and that leaves a balance of about $35,800,000.
I appreciate that. I saw Woodbridge, so I wanted to make sure the public knew.
Very good.
The rationale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallenford.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further questions? Please vote. Again, this is the adoption of the consent agenda. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
So, at this time this evening, we're going to do a couple of things out of order. Tonight is the last night, the last school board meeting for Superintendent Dr. Stephen Walts, Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman. After 16 years of incredible service to our schools, our students, our community, our staff, our teachers, and so the board has some resolutions they're going to offer this evening, and then the board members will each have a few-minute remarks on these gentlemen. And so, I'm going to recommend that the Prince William County School Board approve the resolution commending the Superintendent Dr. Stephen Walts, and the resolution commending Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman. I'll read the resolution commending Dr. Walts, and Vice Chair Zaragapour will read the resolution commending Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman. I'll add you a second after we read it. Where do you want to do it? How about that? Okay, so I'll take the second after the reading of the resolutions. Resolution in appreciation of Dr. Stephen L. Walts. Whereas, Dr. Stephen Walts was appointed Superintendent of Schools for Prince William County Public Schools on July 1, 2005, and has been serving with distinction as one of the longest-serving superintendents in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and will be completing his 16th year on June 30, 2021. And whereas, Dr. Walts is an admired and respected leader in the field of public education, and an effective leader who has navigated Prince William County Schools' enormous success during one of the most dynamic periods of growth for Prince William County. And whereas, Dr. Walts received his Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and Master's of Education in Administration and Supervision from Wichita State University, and his doctoral degree in Education Policy and Leadership from the University of Maryland. And whereas, Dr. Walts has devoted 45 years to public education, first serving as a classroom teacher, administrative intern to the superintendent, principal in Wichita, Kansas, before moving into an assistant superintendent role in Baltimore County, Maryland. And whereas, Dr. Walts served as the superintendent of schools for the Grease Central School District in Rochester, New York, before becoming superintendent of schools for Prince William County Public Schools 16 years ago. And whereas, recognizing the critical importance of early education, Dr. Walts implemented full-day kindergarten and expanded the pre-kindergarten programs. He also expanded specialty programs and career and technical education programs and created incredible opportunities through building a nationally-recognized robotics program. And whereas, Dr. Walts sponsored the creation of the Governor's School at Innovation Park, and created and expanded partnerships with George Mason University and the Northern Virginia Community College. And whereas, Dr. Walts has focused on building an excellent staff throughout his time in office, always committed to improving faculty and staff compensation in incredibly challenging economic times. And whereas, under Dr. Walts' leadership, Prince William County has experienced an increase in the graduation rate for 13 consecutive years, and Prince William County Schools earn the highest graduation rate for English learners in the state. And whereas, responding to significant growth, Dr. Walts opened 25 new school facilities, with two additional school openings this fall, including the Division's 13th High School. And whereas, the National School Boards Association's named Prince William County Schools as one of only five first-place winners in the nation in 2018's Magno Awards for Equity Initiatives. And whereas, thanks to Dr. Walts' leadership, all-eligible Prince William County Schools are accredited compared with a statewide accreditation rate of 92%. Prince William County is the largest school division in the state with all schools accredited without any conditions. And whereas, Dr. Walts was twice selected as Virginia Region 4 Superintendent of the Year. Whereas, Dr. Walts' wife, Kathleen Walts, is an exceptional leader in her own right in Fairfax County Public Schools, contributing significantly to one of the largest school divisions in the nation as Executive Director of the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, and has given her own time to volunteering in Prince William County Schools. And whereas, Dr. Walts' daughter, Delaney Walts, is a proud graduate of Marshall Elementary School, Benton Middle School, and Colgan, J. Colgan Senior High School, Colgan Senior High School, where she was a student in the Center for Fine and Performing Arts, a graduate of the class of 2021, and has contributed significantly over the course of her years in school to the betterment of our entire school system with her own success in academics, STEM, and in the arts while always encouraging her peers. And whereas, Dr. Walts' intellect, kindness, generosity, dedication, and unmatched stamina have made a substantial and lasting mark on Prince William County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board recognizes and appreciates Dr. Stephen Walts' 16 years of steadfast service committed to our students, staff, members, and community, values his friendship as a colleague, and shares best wishes for great success and happiness in all of his and his family's future endeavors upon his retirement on June 30, 2021. Next, Ms. Zaragapour will read the resolution regarding Keith Iman, Deputy Superintendent.
This is the resolution in appreciation of Keith Iman. Whereas, Mr. Keith Iman received his Bachelor of Arts in Geography and Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and Middle School Social Studies from the State University of New York at Buffalo, and received his Master of Education in Education Administration and Management from the University of Texas at San Antonio. And whereas, Mr. Iman has devoted 45 years to public education, first serving as an elementary classroom teacher in Judson Independent School District in Converse, Texas, before serving as a teacher in residence in San Antonio. And where, and whereas, Mr. Iman served as Deputy Director of Computer Technology in Northside Independent School District in San Antonio, before serving many administrative roles in technology and communications in the Grease Central School District in Rochester, New York, and then becoming Associate Superintendent for Communications and Technology Services for Prince William County Public Schools in 2005. Mr. Iman was promoted to Deputy Superintendent in 2017. And whereas, Mr. Iman provided leadership for the establishment of Spark, the Education Foundation for Prince William County Schools, increasing annual revenue from $400,000 to about $4 million, and supporting more than 1,000 business partnerships, in addition to establishing an award-winning robotics program at every school. And whereas, under Mr. Iman's leadership, Prince William County Schools established a long-range informational technology plan to expand core infrastructure and ensure instructional and business systems can access data and resources needed to support teaching and learning and provide effective communications. And whereas, in an effort to ensure effective and transparent communication, Mr. Iman established communication standards, protocols, and templates, and provided leadership for the redesign of the website and addition of a mobile app. Additionally, he provided leadership for the development of award-winning state and nationally-recognized school division communications. And whereas, Mr. Iman's efforts have made Prince William County Schools widely recognized as one of the school divisions with excellent customer service to its students, families, and staff, and where his efforts have helped make Prince William County Schools the number-one school division to work for in Virginia. And whereas, to demonstrate that Prince William County Schools is committed to inclusive practices and equity to promote excellence for all, Mr. Iman provided leadership and support for the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, resulting in an equity scorecard and equity statement. And whereas, Mr. Iman provided leadership and support to our schools, students, and our community during a difficult pandemic. And whereas, Mr. Iman's wife, Janine Iman, served Prince William County Schools as a fifth-grade teacher at Antietam and Marshall Elementary Schools for 14 years, retiring in 2019. She served with distinction and a commitment to always making sure her students received the best education, and still serves Prince William County Schools as a substitute teacher. And now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board recognizes and appreciates the 16 years of dedicated service committed to our students, staff members, and community, values his friendship as a colleague, and shares best wishes for Mr. and Mrs. Iman upon his retirement on June 30, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Each board member does have some comments to make, and we'll start with Ms. Jessie.
Dr. Walts, you know, I worked under your leadership, and I want to, I want to say I really appreciate what you did for Vaughn Elementary when I was there. I think you know the exact number of years when I said, no one's visiting my school. How many years was it? 14. 14 years. I had not had anyone visit my school, and you came to my school. Secondly, I want to thank you for helping me not ride the kindergarten bus. As a principal, you always rode that kindergarten, I had a good time with those kindergarteners. They told all the secrets in the house. But I really enjoyed riding that bus. But the full-day kindergarten meant a lot, not only instructionally, but just breaking up the day was another job for us, and I really appreciate that. The other thing, I think there's a little video where I have a picture of you with my kindergarten-to-college graduates, and it's in my office, and I have another photo, which I will probably send to you. But you don't remember this, but at a principal's meeting, when I had the first kindergarten-to-college project, I sent an invitation to you, and you showed it to every single principal in that room. And I don't know if, I don't think you realize what it meant to me, to think this crazy idea of taking fifth graders down to Virginia Tech was a great idea. I appreciate that. Then finally, when I became principal at Vaughn, they said, you don't have a cafeteria. And I said, oh, you're kidding, right? They said, no, you really don't have a cafeteria. And I didn't. And we had, I call it Meals on Wheels, because our food came across the street on this little van. You not only had the cafeteria, you added a library for me. We did the inside renovation of that building. You did a tremendous amount of things for me. And then finally, when I had the pergola in the yard, which, you know, I do a lot of things, a lot of crazy things at Vaughn, but I felt school should feel like home, and you sat in that yard, and you said, you know, I don't think you wondered how I got all my money, but I didn't have an assistant principal. And, and so that's why I had money, because I had an intern who did as much as an assistant principal or more. And you asked this question, you said, how many kids do you have? And I said, something like 700. And you became very quiet, you and Diane, you said, Lily, you have to have an assistant principal. And I said, good, because I spent all the money anyway on the kids. But I just want you to know that I appreciate everything that you've done. To Keith, Keith is just Keith. When you, when you came, the three of you, the two Keats and Dr. Walts, and we were in a Ruby Pains, and the three of you walked in, and you know, we called you guys the men in black. That was your name. And my response, because you had all this hair and this little white spot, and my response was Elvis has entered the building. Because you had this beautiful black hair, and Keith has always been by your side, and I want to tell you that when we went on those trips, and I know you, the trips with, down to Virginia School Board Association, you took care of us, and you took care of him too, and I really appreciate it. You walk out and say, Lily, you got to be in the lobby. You know, the car was always there. You take care of everyone, and what you've done for technology is just tremendous. So I just want to say that I enjoy working with you, and I know you guys are going to have a good time. I'm not sure you're going to do a lot of work. He's telling me about these beautiful shoes he's wearing, and I told him, I don't think he's going to be wearing shoes anymore after this. But anyway, thank you very, very much for all you've done.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they told us we had three minutes. I don't know how I can cram 16 years into three minutes, but what I will say is, Dr. Walts, I don't, I'm sure you don't remember, but 16 years ago, I met you on the steps of Rockledge at a back-to-school night when I was enrolling my kindergartner, fresh kindergarten parent, first child. And I thought to myself, well, this is impressive. I've been a Prince William County student, now I'm a Prince William County's mom, and I've never met a superintendent before. And honestly, you wowed me from that moment, and as my mom was here earlier, she's still talking about you 16 years later and praying for you. It's been an adventure, and I can honestly say, I really appreciate everything that you've done. I had words written, but I just think it's better to speak from my heart. I cannot imagine what it has been like for 16 years, every four years, getting eight new bosses that you have to then start over with every four years. That just deserves a moment of silence in itself. You have navigated the waters with such grace and such dignity. I don't think people really understand the amount of work that your life entails being superintendent. It really is seven days a week, 365 days a year, because you're never off. People stop you everywhere. For me personally, it has been a joy to have my children be Prince William County students. It has been a learning experience and a very humbling experience, being a board member, serving with you, just realizing the amount of work that you have done to bring our school division into the 21st century, to be progressive, to be an equitable school division, and to really walk the walk and talk the talk when you say that you care about kids and you care about your staff. And between the Governor's School, serving on that board, continuing that legacy... And between the governor's school, serving on that board, continuing that legacy, and every time I visit Independence Non-Traditional, and I look at that building and I see that those kids have school, a whole building and bus transportation, and those are the kids that everyone's sort of forgotten about, and they deserve the best. And to me, that speaks volumes of the person that you are, to continue to do that. And I am just very honored that I was able to serve with you. I hope that you actually get to sit at your piano and play songs that aren't Code Red Day songs, and that wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And for Keith, thank you so much for always being so nice, because I am perpetually late and always causing you a heart attack at every conference we ever went to. There's usually a phone call from the lobby and on a cell phone, "Ms. Williams, we're in the lobby waiting for you." And you've always been so patient. But above and beyond that, the expertise that you have brought to this division when it comes to technology, dealing with all of us, and especially me going, "Well, what about this? Well, can't we translate this? Well, we should just text people. We should just do this." And you would always be like, "No, Ms. Williams, we have a plan for that." And again, three sixty-five, seven days a week, and what people probably don't know is that we owe you so much for always getting Dr. Walz somewhere that wasn't to this building or to a school and telling all of your secrets. But Mr. Iman was Dr. Walz's GPS, so if there was ever a need for Dr. Walz to get somewhere outside of Prince William County, it was not done without Mr. Iman, which is a job in itself. So thank you so much for your service, for the impact that you've had on this division, and just really to both of you, thank you for everything that we don't know that you've done, because you don't brag about all of the marvelous things that you've brought and the value-add to the school division. So I wish you both all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Dr. Walz, I realized that my oldest daughter entered PWCS as a kindergartner in September of two thousand five, the very year that you began your tenure as a superintendent here in Prince William County Schools. So for all of my children, you have been the superintendent, and you have left a lasting mark on this division. And when I say that they have received a fantastic education, I know it is entirely up to you and your leadership and your staff and your assistants and everybody else, so thank you. I don't have any long-term memories, really, of Dr. Walz, or at least, so I'm going to focus my remarks on the last year and a half at my time as a board member. And so I like to think of this last year and a half as a journey that we've been on together, maybe a railway journey, a cross-country trip, so to speak, a very long cross-country trip. I came onto the board in January twenty twenty. As a new member, I wasn't sure of how, who, or what. And I remember I had an introductory lunch with you early on in January, and that was fabulous and wonderful. You were gracious and warm, you were friendly, knowledgeable, welcoming, and I appreciated that so very much. And then we got right into work with budget meetings and hearings, and then there was this strange news out of China about this weird virus, and nobody really knew what was going on with that, but suddenly, by March thirteenth, it was a full-blown pandemic, and we became conversant with the words "novel," coronavirus, and soon the words COVID-19. And of course, that transformed the work that we did as a division this year. A tough way to go out for you and Mr. Iman, but we pivoted quickly, and we revisited the budget. We did that all over again, I remember. We learned about Zoom and how to use it, and virtual platforms and Canvas Learning Management Systems, and everything pretty much got jostled and tossed out and started over, kind of like a massive storm on our long journey. And it became apparent that the virus would not be contained, and so prospects for school, of school for the fall grew more dire and a lot more stressed. And so we all worked all through the summer. None of us got a break. I know, Mr. Iman, Dr. Walz, I mean, you probably worked eight days a week, I think. And, you know, we had anxious and scared teachers and staff. Nobody knew what was going on. We had no real plan to guide us, but yet we came up with a plan, and you led your staff and your division, our division in this. So you came out strong from the beginning, prioritizing health and safety of all of our employees, and earned the appreciation of all of them. And to both of you, no one can doubt your commitment to your most valuable resource, which is your fantastic employees. I think that that is absolutely commendable. As the journey continued through the summer, fall, and winter, I'm just going to lump that altogether, just for the sake of all of us, we all struggled to find the right balance between our core focus of educating children and the demands of the pandemic and preserving health and safety. That was the biggest challenge, and we struggled with that, and it was hard. It was hard for everybody. We eventually struck that balance, and we began to move with speed to open up schools bit by bit, and with the miracle of a powerful vaccine, we accelerated into opening up for everyone as spring approached. And here we are, somewhat of a pause in the journey tonight to let our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Walz, and Deputy Mr. Iman get off soon at this stop. But of course, the journey will continue, and we're in good hands. You have left us in good hands. You have led us along this way so that we are in a good shape to move forward for the future. So in closing, I want to share a favorite quote with you from Gordon Hinckley, who is a religious leader, and he is quoting John, sorry, Jenkins Lloyd Jones, who is a journalist. And this is the quote, "Anyone who imagines that bliss is normal is going to waste a lot of time running around shouting that he has been robbed. The fact is, most putts don't drop, most beef is tough, most children grow up to be just people, most successful marriages require a high degree of mutual toleration, most jobs," this is the pointed one here, "are more often dull than otherwise, except here, the last year. Life is like an old-time rail journey, delays, sidetracks, smoke, dust, cinders, and jolts, interspersed only occasionally by beautiful vistas and thrilling bursts of speed. The trick is to thank the Lord for letting you have the ride." And I wanted to thank you, Dr. Walz, and Mr. Iman, for letting us have the ride. Thank you for being powerful leaders at a time, especially in my tenure on the board, of very much, a time of great disruption and uncertainty, and guiding us along that journey. I have no doubt that your lasting impact on our school division will be felt for generations to come, and I wish you the best for retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I have two different speeches, one for Mr. Iman, and one for Dr. Walz. Mr. Iman, thank you as a parent and a community member and a former employee for your service to our county. I'm going to miss your kindness, your dedication. You leave an incredible legacy of service. The accomplishments listed on this resolution from Spark to consistent leadership during a pandemic is amazing. Even though the last year and a half was hard, I am so very thankful that I got a chance to work with you. Your positive impact on this county will be shown for generations. Dr. Walz, forty-five years in education and sixteen here in Prince William County. Wow. Listening to your accomplishments tonight by board members and on the resolution and outside in the atrium, there's one line in the resolution that sticks out to me, and it says, "Dr. Walz's intellect, kindness, generosity, dedication, unmatched stamina have made a substantial and lasting mark on Prince William County Public Schools. After working with you this past year and a half, I believe this summarizes your commitment and legacy." Isn't that what we all want to contribute to this world, to make it better than when we came to it? And you can leave knowing that you made Prince William County Schools better. So thank you. I know you like quotes. I learned that from the graduations. So I'm going to end with a quote for you. It's by Abraham Lincoln, "Whatever you are, be a good one." So thank you for being a good one. This retirement is well-earned for both of you. The legacy built by both of you sets Prince William County Schools on a strong path. Thank you both for your years of dedication to our future, and collective congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Mr. Iman, thank you. I was just, I was actually trying to find a quote from Isaac's army, which they're all very depressing, so I didn't read that, but our mutual fascination in the history of World War II and the Holocaust is something I think we'll always have connected together. Look forward to hopefully reading some more with you. Your integrity is impeccable, and I have to admire you for your loyalty to the system. And, Dr. Walz, you two are truly friends by every definition of the word. So thank you for also being my sounding board many a times. So, Dr. Walz, first, I will recognize that my predecessor unfortunately is not here tonight, and she was, she's a great person, and she was on the board that hired you, and she would constantly remind me that you are a good man, and she is very proud that she voted and hired you. So I want to share the words of Betty Covington, who cannot be here tonight, unfortunately, but about, you know, her thoughts about you and her constant advocacy for you. So, we didn't start off great. I look at the end of the dais there, and I remember a previous person stuck me down there with you when the board started as a way of, he thought, a punishment for you by you and I having to be together down there. And it's interesting that over the time, actually, it kind of changed, and we actually became very close, to a point where he moved me away from you and stuck Mr. Deutsch down there with you. So, but, you know, so I remember coming in to the board, and being a former teacher, I do remember my orientation as a new teacher. That time, there was, they were playing, there was like a tribal music theme and stuff, and you went on there and started banging the drums, and your musical talent has always carried through from that point on. And over the time, and I still remember a very deep conversation you and I had in Roanoke after I started on the board, and what we talked about, and the different perspective you gave me to managing and running a school system from the inside, because from the outside, it's a totally different thing, you know, especially as running a political campaign against a well-entrenched incumbent, and basically the advocacy and the positions you have to take. So I respected you for that, and I got to know you very well in the work you had done in your family, Kathleen Delaney, and some of the great things that you had done. Speaking of some of those things, I did want to tout some great things that you did either before my time or currently during my time on the board, specifically your advocacy for, you know, Potomac High School, the politics behind that when that building was built years and years ago, that I get to hear from Ms. Covington all the time. You came through years later and delivered that beautiful expansion, renovation of the gym, the cafeteria, all the great things you did to make that right there in Potomac, including the cybersecurity program, the advocacy for Cambridge, the welding program, which is a phenomenal program, if anyone hasn't looked into that, that we offer at the Potomac High School. The work you've done with the graduation rate, obviously, we've talked about that before, grading reform. I remember as a teacher, at first, I hated standard-based grading, full transparency, but then I decided to pilot it and be the one teacher in my building at Gainesville Middle that piloted it, and then I realized the benefits of it, and the fact that although at times it can be frustration and it changes the pedagogy of kind of what you're taught as an instructor for teaching, it's really about the kid's success and making sure that they know the content. And you said it during your speech out there, the advocacy and being there for kids and giving kids multiple chances to show their success. I think that's reflective in that. A bunch of other facts, I don't want to go on too much, but just talk about, again, some of the work you've done. You did advocate, you have been a huge advocate even when it comes to political and public policy at the General Assembly, making Cambridge classes, being on equal footing with IB and AP courses for students, getting college credits. That's a big thing for that high school. We have a large ELL population, and we have the highest graduation rate in the region for that. Your dual enrollment programs, the IT program at Forest Park, this is now kind of during my term here, and the work you did, bringing that state-of-the-art turf football field and sports program that's going to be completed this summer. The residents, thank you for that. Couple ones that are especially dear to my heart is, you know, the advocacy when I was brought into Potomac Middle School and showed kind of the internal kind of aquaponics program that was done, and then kind of things happened inside. We won't get into that, but you stood up for those teachers, and you pushed that program, and beyond just that program, you helped secure the funding to build that greenhouse that they will fully, hopefully, roll out next year after the pandemic for the aquaponics program. So I thank you for that. Two other things is, when I came on the board, the Washington Reed Pre-K Program, you know, I said a couple weeks ago about the work you've done with the full-day kindergarten, but the efforts and the advocacy you've done for pre-K, an expansion that my own son benefited from, and many families' children identified early with child-finding programs like that. It was a blessing that that building had been renovated, and it just worked out with building the full extension on the paddy, that we were able to make that a world-class pre-K program for the east side of the county. And then, of course, you know, I was always vested in the trades programs, and I really wanted that IBW partnership to finally come to fruition. And I remember Mr. Malgrew tried his best to find a spot in either Forest Park or Potomac for me for it, and he came up to me, I remember, at a basketball game, and said that if we bring it to Potomac, they'll lose their weight room, and I didn't want to deal with that. So for the sake of, you know, giving it to the kids and making sure the program was in place, we put it in Stonewall Jackson High School, which is a good location, central county, and real close to the facility there. So inclusion, you know, we come full circle. I thank you for your advocacy. I thank you for the memories, and I wish you and Mr. Iman the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Mrs. Ralston. Diane. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm kind of simple on this. Dr. Walz, I do not have a long speech. I just want to say thank you for all you have done for Neaps School Schools. And with that and that alone, says that you're a great guy, and I love to look for you sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. We'll go to Ms. Zargarpur, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So, being new on this board and getting hit with a pandemic, I feel like I've been robbed of some of the things that other board members talked about. I didn't get to do a conference. I didn't get to build these great relationships over these, you know, football games or, you know, performances and things like that. It's been a rough year. But, Dr. Walz, I was remembering, one of the first times I ever saw you was at Marshall Elementary. Just as a parent, in a parent role, you had walked into the office and asked a question about, it was about a reading log, and I just remembered, this is the superintendent of our schools, and he's also a parent. So right then, I figured our kids were in good hands, right? And I also remember one time I was substituting, and we had snow in the afternoon, and this should have told me something about what could have happened, what was going to happen in this pandemic, because it snowed in the afternoon, and you did an early release, and you showed up at Marshall to pick up your daughter, and the buses were running later and later for elementary, and people were complaining, of course, and you walked in, and I overheard you, you know, kind of, "Ooh, I got here." And you were very, very, very just, you understood that this was difficult, and people were upset, and all you wanted to do was make sure people were safe. And that's really what happened in this pandemic as well. And I don't think I really, you know, when we were in it, I didn't really stop too much. And when I was thinking about that time at Marshall, it was like, you're the real deal, and you're consistent. And our kids have always been in good hands with your leadership. I have three daughters. My older two have graduated from Prince William County Schools. They are both very successful. My younger one is doing well. She's at Colgan, and I remember thinking when that school was opening up, how jealous I was of all these kids, because that's the school that I would have loved to have gone to. I love the vision that you have for the school division. I know you're not retiring. I know you're up to something else. You're going to keep your hands in it. I can't see you just stopping. So whatever it is you do, I wish you the best. Mr. Iman, one of my favorite memories of you, and we crossed paths a few times. My daughter was in your wife's class, and she was an excellent teacher. But I remember there was an incident where we were at a small meeting, and I met you in that meeting, and you advocated for the people in our community. And, you know, when we have these talks about equity and commitment to making sure our kids are getting what they need, Mr. Iman was right there, leading these things. He cares very much that our students are getting the best education on all levels, and I'm so grateful for that. And again, somebody else said that you, you know, we don't hear from you, but thank you so much. I know you have personally positively affected my family. And again, I don't see- have personally positively affected my family. And again, I don't see you completely retiring. You're going to do something, I'm sure. So, best of luck to you in your retirement, and thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to thank Diana Gallata and Matt Guilfoyle and Communications Department, and all those in the department to help me craft the resolution. And it's challenging on both resolutions to limit them. Sixteen years of service, longest-serving superintendent in the Commonwealth, or one of, and it was near impossible to put this thing together in a way that would encompass everything that we talked about. Mr. Iman, you know, we had a reception earlier, folks, and then I gave a little bit of a speech earlier about the, the great contributions these two gentlemen have given our school division. And I think, Mr. Iman, you have implemented the great vision that Dr. Walz had and has for our school division. You've implemented that with integrity, and, and with, with fiduci, you know, in, with fidelity, in a way that the school division will be grateful and thankful for forever, forever. And I think that that is incredibly something you should be very proud of, and our school division owes you an incredible thanks. And I'll add, you know, in the resolution, we mentioned your wife, Janine Iman. She taught my child, my daughter, one of the greatest teachers we've ever worked with, continues to be someone we count on. And, and my daughter looks up to, you know, teachers. In my culture tradition, it's sort of, you have to listen to God, teacher, parent. That's the order. And in that regard, you and Mrs. Iman fulfilled that with, with absolute responsibility, fidelity, and integrity, and, and I really appreciate it. Dr. Walz, resolution here is, it's a long one, and it's a wonderful one. Could be much longer, should be much longer. I think the word in the resolution, the two words that stand out to me, unmatched stamina. Unmatched stamina. There is nobody who would have gone through what you have gone through and still sit there with a smile on his face. A great recession, the recovery from a great recession, leading a school division that has the, among the lowest per pupil spending, and to navigate that in the incredible growth period of 60,000 to 90,000 students over 16 years, building 25 buildings, taking us from 75 to 100 facilities, 102 really, 27, and then getting smacked right in the face with a pandemic, something no one has ever seen in our lifetime. And to navigate all of that, and deal with every board you've dealt with, including this one, and manage it with a smile on your face, and the kindness and genuineness you continue to have for your staff, your faculty, your students, is unmatched. I'm not sure will ever be repeated. And again, the community is grateful. You know, I, I, I talk about, you know, we should care about the student's GPA and the grades, and, and, but I, but I really do care, and, and you made this mark on me even more so, about their GPS. Their GPS, you know, we care about their grades, that matters. Their SAT scores, that matters. Their, their GPA matters. But the GPS, where do they want to go? How do they want to get there? What would they like to see on the way? That is the responsibility of all of us in public education. That is the responsibility, and it is that responsibility with which you have dealt with over 16 years, to make sure our children have an idea where they want to go, who they want to be, what they would like to see on the way, what experiences they get to have as they do it. You've done that. You've done that. And, and it is that GPS that they will all be grateful for having in the future, moving forward as they go on with the rest of their lives. And I'll leave with one last, sort of another cultural tradition story, that, you know, in our culture, you, you, you continue to generate blessings after death if you've done three things. The first thing is your children. Your success with your children, the kindness that they do will continue to generate blessings for you afterwards. And you both, Keith and Steve, have amazing children. I know they're going to go on to do great things. We have nothing but love, respect, and hope for what Delaney is going to do in the future, and we know it'll be wonderful. And if it's anything like her parents, you know, it's going to be amazing. The second is if you build a well. A well continues to give water, year after year, even after one's death. The third, though, is teaching, writing a book, leaving something that continues to inspire knowledge, create knowledge, and, and make knowledge. The school division you have overseen for 16 years will do that forever. As long as this nation stands, the school division will do that. And, and, and with all of that, and with what every student receives from the work you both have done, you will continue to receive blessings even after your death. So, may God bless both of you. May God bless the division and the students here, and, and we want to thank you very much for everything you have done. And with that, I would ask the board to please vote on these resolutions. And then, oh, I need a second. Do we have a second? A second. Ms. Williams?
Chairman, I second.
Ms. Williams seconds the motion. Thank you, Ms. Division Counsel, Ms. McGowan. Please vote. If deputy, if the clerk, oh, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Will the clerk read the vote?
The vote is seven yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Just, we'll go a little bit out of order. If Dr. Walz and Keith would like to make a couple remarks. I know you do have your superintendent's time, where you may make remarks there, where you can choose to do that there, or if you would like to do it now. Mr. Iman, would you like to make some remarks?
Well, it's a little difficult after that, but hey, thank you all very much. Very touched by the sentiment and the kind words. And I've appreciated being a part of Prince William County Public Schools for these past 16 years. I've appreciated working with Dr. Walz for more than 20 years. We've had the pleasure and the honor of doing that together. And as I've said many times, when I'm given the opportunity, in the 45 years that I've been in public education, these last 16, and the people that I've worked with, the employees, the students, school boards, the community, the business partners, absolutely the very best that I've encountered. And it's been a privilege and an honor just to be part of it, and I will treasure that for a long, long time. And thank you very much. Thank you. I certainly appreciate the resolution, all of your kind remarks. Thank you for the reception before. It's just been an incredible journey. And to think of all the things that we've accomplished together, as I mentioned at the reception, you know, when you're a leader, you can have a lot of ideas. But if you don't get people to follow you, you can't put those into action. And furthermore, without board votes, there are most big things require at least five votes on a board. So, I've worked with a lot of board members over those 16 years, and the product of improving education and improving the opportunities for our students has continued to work, even with changing board members and changing boards over the 16 years. But I, I sleep well at night. I fought the good fight a few times. And, you know, sometimes when you have discourse, it's difficult, but most of the time, you get a good decision through doing that. So, I really don't have any regrets. I'm, I'm excited about the school division. I was really, you know, it was an honor and a privilege to get Prince William. So, there's about 16,000 school systems in the U.S., and we're the 45th largest. And it is, it's, you got to be all in. But it was, it was a pleasure to be all in. And I just want to say, I loved working with Keith. But I also want to say, for our daughter and all the children, I couldn't be happier, and as her mother as well, representing all the students in Prince William. And she graduated just a week ago, but so thrilled to have the opportunity for her, her friends, and all the other 90,000 kids to have this kind of an education, to where you can come at pre-K, you get a full-day K opportunity, you can start a specialty program even at elementary school. Many of our elementaries now have a second language. We have specialty programs in most of our middle schools, and then, of course, the high schools are like the envy of the nation. And I'll just end with, with one last story. So, I had just, I had signed my contract, and I think it was maybe, Ms. McGowan was the attorney, and she helped facilitate the contract. But I think it was in March or April, maybe, of 2005. And shortly after I signed the contract, I was still superintendent in Grease, New York, so I didn't start here until July. But I always attended the National School Boards Conference. And so, I attended the National School Boards Conference in the spring of 2005, but I was still the superintendent in Grease. And I noticed that Prince William County had multiple presentations in, at that conference. And I remember going to a presentation about the Prince William County Specialty School Programs. And I've got to say, I sat there, Dr. Kelly, my predecessor, who served 18 years. So, God bless him. I, I got to 16, but he served 18. And listening to the programs and services that were offered to the children in Prince William County, I'm telling you, folks, it's second to none. And, you know, sometimes the school systems we're compared to don't have what we have. And when you think of the fact that you can go to a specialty program and get transportation to it, not to mention our unique alternative programs and CTE, JROTC, there's so many great programs. But I knew that I was inheriting a really strong school division. And I remember when I, when I came, the school board said, you know, we have a great school system, but we want to make a world-class. And that's when we branded the providing a world-class education. And, you know, every board since then has worked to continue to improve the school division. But it's a great division. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. I forgot, Ms. Simpson, can you have them queue up? The board made a quick video to share, and then I have another video. And then, then we'll be done with that. We'll move on to citizen comment.
Dr. Walz, this past winter, you and I were talking at Unity Reed High School. Suddenly, students walked into the hallway, and I remember you lighting up with joy. You were so happy to see them. It really is all about the kids for you. That was a great reminder that you were first and always will be a teacher. Congratulations on your retirement.
Dr. Walz, my favorite, favorite memory of you was when you came to our school doing what we call our kindergarten to college day. And these are the graduates for 2022. These kids will be in college. You came down, you supported the program. I want to thank you for attending our ceremony and supporting Vaughn and supporting me. Thank you.
Dr. Walz, you helped me so much in our district. And our district has changed. We have new schools. We have more food than we know what to do now. And we thank you many, many times over. So, God bless you, and you carry on. Thank you.
I was at a middle school concert, looked to the side, and I noticed that Dr. Walz had slipped in, and he was standing to the side. But pretty soon, the kids noticed that he was there. And when they noticed that he was there, you could see the excitement. And I thought, how cool is it that we have the top educator in our county, so beloved by so many students?
There was this one board meeting, and one of the things that they handed out were these little sunglasses. I think they were shaped as stars, and Dr. Walz had a pair. And for whatever reason, I had this very bright, colorful autism scarf that someone had knitted for me. So, I remember leaning over and then having him wrap the scarf around himself with the glasses, and he pulled off a pretty good Benny and the Jets, Elton John look there.
I truly admire your passion for educating all of our students and all the wonderful programs and advancements that you've brought to our school division. I have to say, as a direct quote I heard from a student this morning, you are absolutely the coolest superintendent around, and you will be dearly missed.
Hi, Dr. Walz. You have been the superintendent for my children's entire educational careers. We had full-day kindergarten. We had access to new and improved programs. And all of my kids have benefited because of the work you have done for Prince William County Schools. I know as a parent, I'm grateful, and I wish you the best. Thank you, Dr. Walz.
Hello, Dr. Walz. You've taught our community one of the most important things, and that is kindness matters. You've done that in everything you do, building 25 schools, leading our division by diversifying it in ways we've never seen before, and making sure that our graduation rates continue to increase. Thank you very much, and I wish all the best to you and your family in your retirement.
It is often said that it takes a village to raise and nurture a child.
Can you give the volume?
There is no doubt that our superintendent, Dr. Stephen Walz, has been at the helm of our village, nurturing, educating, and supporting the students of Prince William County.
Can we get the audio, gentlemen?
Since the start of his tenure in 2005, Dr. Walz has provided excellent leadership in managing one of the country's largest and fastest-growing school systems, overseeing over 90,000 students, 100 school centers, and over 11,500 employees. During his tenure, our school system has made great accomplishments, increasing our on-time graduation rate from 83% to 93%, providing services in over 100 languages for our diverse community, and supporting the success of our most vulnerable students, resulting in our school system meeting and exceeding state averages in all content areas. Dr. Walz has propelled Prince William County Schools to success through both good and challenging times in the world. He has led our school system through the economic upheaval of 2008, and most recently, with the worldwide pandemic that saw our school system innovate to provide continuous education to our students. In his 16 years leading our school system, he has directed the opening of 24 new schools, the implementation of full-day kindergarten, and the progression of specialty programs to serve every child.
So, why, why, why don't we just go ahead and take that offline and tell you guys can fix it, and we'll play it later, maybe before superintendent's time. So, we're going to move on to citizen comment time. Thank you again, Dr. Walz, Keith. We really appreciate it. Okay, back to citizen comment time. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on school board's authority to conduct this meeting through electronic means, unlike other public bodies meeting electronically, under more expansive legal authority, all discussions at this meeting by board members, staff, and citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes. When the board is able to resume regular meetings without the virtual participation permitted during the state of emergency, expanded citizen comment will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment, both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments by email to the clerk, who will share them with the school board. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the school board Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the school board clerk no later than 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, May 5, 2021, may address the school board in person or virtually electronically about matters relating to May 5, 2021, agenda items only. There are, um, let's see, we have eight people, um, eight persons speak, eight people speaking in person and seven virtually. We'll start with the in-person folks. Citizens are reminded if they're not speaking on a specific agenda item for this evening's meeting, they will be asked to step down and their mics will be cut. It is really important to follow those rules. We've asked people to do that all year. And, um, the folks have, have been, um, very, very cooperative in, in making sure they did that. So please stick to the agenda item. Otherwise, I will cut you off. It's not, um, anything to do with the item. It's just the way we set up the meetings. Once we move back to normal, um, uh, policies, we'll, we'll resume the, the way we did citizen comment time. So first, we'll start with, um, and I'll call the first three names up. They can come and have a seat up front. Milton Johns, Lee Bravo, Isaiah McCain, McCann, McCann. So Milton Johns. And, and I'll just make a quick comment here. Milton Johns, um, sat in this chair a number of years ago and served as chairman-at-large of the Prince William County School Board for many years. And I believe was one of the members of the board who brought Dr. Walts from Greece, New York. Mr. Johns, the honorable.
Thank you. I don't know if that's on. Thank you, Chairman Latif.
Can we get his mic on, please?
No? Okay, there we go. Uh, thank you and good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Zaragapur. Board members, Ms. McGowan, Madam Clerk, Ms. Simpson. Senior staff, Dr. Walts, Mr. Iman, and fellow citizens. My name is Milton C. Johns. My address is on record with the clerk of the board. I come before you tonight to pay tribute to Dr. Stephen L. Walts and his 16 years as superintendent of Prince William County Schools. Many of my remarks have been shared by others already, so I'll try not to be too repetitive. I had the privilege of serving on the board that hired Dr. Walts, and I also had the privilege to serve as chairman of the school board for eight of Dr. Walts' 16 years. He probably thinks it felt like 20. Our community owes a significant debt of gratitude to Dr. Walts and so many educational professionals who serve under his leadership. Beyond the tens of thousands of students who graduated from Prince William County Schools while Dr. Walts was superintendent, including both of my children, there are many lasting legacies that Dr. Walts brought to Prince William County. He implemented full-day kindergarten for all children ahead of most jurisdictions in Northern Virginia and during a time of intense budget challenges. He built and expanded schools in an attempt to meet crushing growth. He improved academics, graduation rates, and narrowed achievement gaps. Under Dr. Walts' leadership, all Prince William County middle and high schools implemented specialty programs, and the governor's school at Innovation Park was established. And others have already mentioned the robotics program in elementary specialty schools. Dr. Walts also implemented a culture of customer service in Prince William County Schools, recognizing that leadership and the school system serve multiple customers, parents, students, teachers, taxpayers, and education professionals. Our challenge as a community is to preserve the many positive changes and implementations made by Dr. Walts as we go forward to deliver world-class education. His legacy will live on for generations. We also bid farewell to Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman, who was an instrumental part of that leadership team and who accomplished so much with so little over a decade and a half. We, uh, we are graced by Mr. Iman's contributions as well. We're at a loss to see him move on to the next chapter of life, and I just don't have enough time to sing his praises as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And my time is up. Thank you, Dr. Walts. Before we go, I wanted to give you my business.
Okay. Leah Bravo.
Just Lee.
Lee, sorry.
I'm here to talk about some concerns about the fall agenda for school. I have a few questions. One, why are the teachers being made to fill out questionnaires regarding implicit bias, race, and white privilege? Will you be using their answers to fire those who disagree with your equity policy?
Excuse me, point of order, Mr. Chairman. This is not an agenda item, and we're limited by law to agenda items.
You're talking about the fall, right? The school fall system, and this relates to the fall system.
Regarding to setting up, um, classrooms and setting up, um, the return to learn plan that's on the agenda.
And, and so basically, this is not part of your learning agenda?
No, not for this evening.
What about the budget? Has the budget been adjusted to reflect the equity statement? Loudoun County Public Schools spent over $6 million.
The budget is not, the budget is not on the agenda. This is a legal matter, ma'am.
All right, and regards to the fall, fall agenda, how and will we, will we be made aware of how the recently adopted equity statement will affect hiring practices, teacher trainings, and curriculum? Since you could not answer these questions before, you voted to adopt the statement anyway.
So we'll go ahead and, and ask you to, um, we'll, we'll answer those when those come to the agenda in the fall. So we appreciate your, um, thank you. Isaiah McCann.
Hello. Oh, my gosh, I just completely forgot. Um, my address is on file. My name is Isaiah. Um, I'm coming here today with many questions. Regarding the use of masks this upcoming school year, if you choose to make them mandatory, why do it when most of the masks being sold have warnings on the side saying they do not protect against COVID-19 but act as a blanket? Do you think your kindergarteners are going to keep on their masks going to school, at school, and on the way home? Do you think that it's safe from a medical standpoint to have masks on as we work out? From personal experience, I have been so winded and can't even catch my breath. How can you consider making it mandatory when our governor has taken off all COVID restrictions? Finally, how are you going to possibly enforce it when the CDC demographic charts say cases in 0-18 have the lowest numbers? What else do I have? Okay. Now for the vaccines. Did you fail to realize that it is under emergency use authorization, meaning there are no long-term studies whether this truly works in someone and is listed as, as could be effective? Don't you think for a second of making this mandatory because people will leave public school left and right? Education is to be free to all Americans. If you approve this, you go against that. Isn't that discriminating? Would you violate your beliefs just to get an education? Vaccines aren't experiments, but this one seems like it. And for the social justice committee, committee. Tell me, was there ever a complaint made here before last year, unless she's pertaining to this? Many students, such as myself, don't see color and see the character of others. School has no place to condition students on their social and political views. You have no place forcing political ideologies on students.
So we'll stick to the return of fall.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll ask you to sit down.
Um, now the, what else? The equity statement?
That's not on this evening's agenda.
But like she said, it's talking about back to school. This is something that's being implemented back to school. I'm confused. I'm very confused.
Thank you. Maggie Lee Hurtado. Next will be Carol Fox, Maggie Hansford, and Oveta Scott.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. Dr. Latif, Dr. Walts, Dr. Iman, thank you so much for your contributions to our schools. Tonight, I want to thank everyone on the school division for your efforts in the last school year, particularly teachers and staff that work directly with students and staff that, uh, work to keep our students fed and safe during this pandemic. I hope they are recognized in a meaningful way. I read the Fall 2020 Learning Plan Update, and I appreciate the effort that's been put into it. I am encouraged that the plan seeks to eliminate the dreaded concurrent option, but I am also concerned about the potential changes to start time models. I would like more clarity about the end-of-day bail times. Option two on the plan would mean that elementary school kids would be dismissed around 4:30. What is that going to do to our students and their families? Kids getting off the bus after 5:00 p.m. is not okay. Please scratch that out. It should not be an option. I read, uh, on the presentation that delayed start times benefits students 10 and older. What does it do to our young students to get off the bus after 5:00 p.m.? I'm sure it's not beneficial to them. It will exacerbate the already high rate of obesity in children as well because we are cutting off their time outside. So I would really appreciate that you take a look at those options because option two shouldn't even be up for consideration. Thank you so much.
Carol Fox.
Can I speak, um, Carol Fox, can I speak to the teachers returning to the classroom? Is that on the agenda tonight? Okay, the teachers returning to the classroom have expressed to me some concerns that they have about some of the things that are happening. First of all, some of the teachers are very much afraid, fearing of loss of their jobs in Prince William County. There's a specific school that has a school survey that is not anonymous, that has their name on it, and it has some specific things on it that they are very concerned about. They were asked some questions. The questions that they were asked has to do with, first of all, the first question is about, they must have had an in-service on race this year, so they were asked a question about that. And the second question they were asked about-
So, so we'll, so we'll, this-
This is about, I'm talking about the survey that was-
Right, and this is regarding the, the equity work that the school division is doing. And so that was on last week's agenda. We'll have more time to talk about it in the fall. That's not on this agenda.
I'm just saying, this is the, this is the survey that they were given. And this is why they're worried about their job because they're worried about if they put down specific answers on it, is this, since it has their name on it, is this going to be, uh, and it'll be in their file, then is this going to be returned to at some time? And is it going to be held against-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is not an agenda item, and we are limited by law to agenda items.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And, and, and you're all welcome to continue to email the school board on these matters.
Okay.
And we will have these items on the agenda in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Hansford.
Hi, my name is Maggie Hansford. My address is on file. Thank you, Dr. Walts, and thank you, Mr. Iman. In March of last year, while the pandemic began to spread throughout the country, Prince William County school staff duties and responsibilities changed dramatically with the closing of our buildings. Educators had to learn new ways of communicating to provide excellent lessons for our students for the remainder of the school year, despite the unending changes. All of this was done beyond their contract hours. Last summer, our staff worked long unpaid hours, learning new educational platforms to service students for the new school year. Again, this was done unpaid. All employees, from bus drivers, cafeteria workers, to office staff, custodians, and our educators, had new and complicated requirements to learn and implement quickly. Many staff began returning to the buildings in August of 2020 to service students in the upcoming school year. All special education staff were told they would need to revise every single IEP in short notice, which is usually only done annually. Staff attended regular meetings and training sessions, many of which occurred outside of contract hours. They attended, and they learned on their own unpaid time. Our staff provided meals for students in the rain, wind, and snow. They transported our students from home to school and back, and sometimes were only given their bus route that very day. Prince William educators and staff deserve a bonus. They deserve recognition for going above and beyond to ensure students were educated and their needs were met during a worldwide pandemic. We deeply appreciate Superintendent Walts, division leadership, and our school board working together on the proposed bonus. Every member of our school staff has worked tirelessly this year and deserves to be celebrated and thanked. This bonus is a great way to start. Thank you.
Oveta Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Walts, my name is Oveta Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. As we come to the end of this unique school year, I would like to take a few moments to acknowledge some key individuals that gave 100% or more of their time to ensure that the needs of the children in this community were addressed. First, the cafeteria workers who braved the weather elements to provide meals for our kids. Our custodial staff for cleaning and disinfecting the building from COVID-19. The special ed teachers who rewrote IEPs several times to meet legal obligations. The bus drivers for being the first set of eyes to greet our kids. The SPAD teachers need another shout-out for being the first to provide in-person instruction to our most vulnerable students. Our secretaries who held the front lines of the building dealing with parent concerns. The guidance counselors who were part of the crisis team dealing with students and or staff that had issues coping with the pandemic. The nurses who gave up their weekends to ensure staff receive vaccinations. Teaching assistants who work wherever, wherever the need was in their building. Our tech teachers working the help desk for all those technologically challenged at home. The temporary or long-term substitutes that answered the call for help to work in the classroom. And of course, all elementary and secondary teachers who roomed, zoomed, and sometime quarantined while delivering quality instruction to the best of their abilities. The employees of this district did not give a small percentage of their time or effort, but more. So tonight, I hope this board will live up to its equity statement and give a full, flat, equal bonus to all employees. And I thank you for considering the proposal. And, Dr. Walts, I thank you for your leadership. Stay blessed. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, you want to move to the folks, um, online.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker will be Gabriel, Gabriel Caravantes. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor. Mr. Caravantes, you are, you have the floor.
I am ready to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Caravantes. I'm a student at Old Bridge Elementary School. I just finished third grade. I learned a lot with Ms. Washburn, Ms. Castle, our intern, Mr. Tran, and all the specialists. Thank you to all the teachers, principals, cafeteria workers, and custodians that kept the school going for everyone. They deserve a big bonus. I am also here to ask that you really think about our schedules. Doctors and parents say children must be active and play outside. I agree, but we will not be able to do that if you change the schedule and send us home after 4:30. The bu, the bus will drop us off after 5:00. That is not good for us, and sometimes it, it is dark at 5:00 already. My mom showed me op, the options, and option two is really very terrible. My friends and I like our schedule, but I guess we would be okay going to school earlier so we can leave early and still have time to play and ride our bikes, which is like math. We need to practice so we can get better at it. I also do not think sending us home so late is fair to our teachers either. They've worked a lot this year, and I hope you find a solution that helps the teenagers, but that does not take away our afternoon time with our families and our teachers' time with theirs. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kate Olson Flynn. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board, and Dr. Walts. Before I begin, I would like to thank Dr. Walts and Mr. Iman for their years of leadership in Prince William County and for listening intently to my numerous board speeches. I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. I know that the administration has promised that concurrent teaching will not be the plan of choice next year, but I'm here to implore the administration to do everything possible so that concurrent teaching does not happen in Prince William County Schools at any grade level. The concurrent teaching model has no basis in any theoretical or practical understanding of teaching or learning. In fact, it was developed by a professor for university lectures only, not K-12 education. Further, this mo, model has huge equity and access issues as well. Students and families with health needs or concerns should not be punished for choosing the virtual option by having to watch instruction through a camera and to not have access to their teachers when they need them. While you can say that was their choice, it may not be for some students and families. For example, I have a nephew who had a bone marrow transplant and couldn't go to school in person because of his health. During this time at his exclusive high school in Nova, he participated in concurrent teaching where he watched his teacher instruct the students that were in the classroom. And guess what happened? He was forgotten online, couldn't actively participate in discussions, and had a hard time asking questions, and didn't have any type- and didn't have any type of relationship with his teacher. And his grades suffered, and so did his mental health. This result is not the fault of the teacher. This is the flaw of this model of instruction that is inefficient, inequitable, and overburdens teachers' abilities to meet all students' needs simultaneously. This model is meant for college lectures, not for K-12 instruction. Our teachers know this, you know this, so please don't make it a reality in our schools. Please use our funding to create actual virtual schools with designated virtual teachers so that our children are also able, those children are also able to receive a world-class education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gentry Green. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak tonight. I would like to comment on the school start time in the fall learning plan. I have two children who attend Old Bridge Elementary, and in the fall, they'll be in fourth grade and second grade. I would like to voice my support for an earlier dismissal time for elementary school students, so model number one. It is so important for young children to have time in the afternoons to play outside, to move their bodies, to be with their friends. An earlier dismissal time allows that opportunity. Now, I can understand how a later dismissal time might be favored by dual-working parents, but there are daycare programs, the SAC programs. There are options that are already in place that they can pursue. Our kids, they need time in the afternoon to be kids, to play. Please support an earlier dismissal time for elementary school students. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tyler Davis. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Hi, I'm a second-grade teacher at Minneville Elementary, and I'm happy to see, after the most difficult and trying year of our lives, a one-time employee pay adjustment to, quote, "recognize the extraordinary contributions and sacrifices made by all PWCS employees." I'm glad everyone is receiving an equal $1,600, but isn't equity what we should be searching for or not simply equality? Did we all step up to the level of extraordinary contributions during this pandemic equally? And did we all sacrifice equally? No, we didn't, so why are we being paid equally? I have to start counting using my toes to keep track of how many more people at my school alone deserve more of a bonus than I do. Where is the proportional financial recognition for the Amy Scotts of the county? The special education teachers who are rewriting dozens of IEPs at the last minute to accommodate all the school board's haphazard decrees? For those working in the building since August, while members of this school board were acting like schools weren't even open yet? Or the Susan Richmans of the county, wearing scrub blue gowns and N95 masks during a global pandemic before anyone was vaccinated while trying to get five-year-olds at home to work a laptop? Or for the Barbara Rosses of the county, the secretaries untwisting the tangled mayhem passed down to each site to make all the county's theoretical whims actually work? Why are we all being rewarded equally even though we haven't sacrificed equally? The plan is better than the one from two weeks ago, and it's better than some crummy coin, but it's still not close to complete compensation for the drastically different lives some of us have had to lead over the past school year. By giving us all an equal bonus, you're showing how poorly you can actually recognize the contributions and sacrifices that those in the school buildings make. I don't know if you're overestimating the contributions made by some or underestimating the sacrifices made by others. Either way, I can say I'm upset, but after these past 12 months, I'm not really surprised.
Okay, thank you. Our last speaker is Sandra Kern. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, I'm Sandra Kern. My address is on file. First, I want to say that I completely support with my son the delayed times for the return to learn for high school students. I do feel that there should be an option for students who need additional supports, have opportunities in the morning if they so choose. I do know students got behind during the pandemic, mine included, but stating that we're struggling beforehand leads to frustration, and quite honestly, it's shameful students are slipping through the cracks. We need to use all of our resources. Students and parents need this board to support all the options to get the world-class education for every student. Some students just learn differently. Second, I'm so proud to celebrate the class of 2021 success, and also for students that gave their best tries during the last year. Everyone learned many things, and the school can teach sometimes. However, grace, patience, and peace were self-taught. Also, how being in those brick-and-mortar buildings create an exceptional human bond. And finally, I look forward to welcoming the, and meeting the new superintendent, Dr. McDade, in July, and I would hope she leads us into the best directions to take our children to the next level of exceptional learning as Dr. Waltz has done in his tenure in amazing 16 years. Dr. Waltz, thank you for my 2019 and 2018 Prince William County School graduates and my special education student who is in the welding program, class of 2024, a work in progress. Board, thank you for your navigation this year. It hasn't been easy. And as always, reading is a life skill, and I thank you all.
Okay, that's all I have, Chairman Latif.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Stevens. Tonight, this is the moment where we normally recognize the student representative. Ben Kim, our rep, is unable to join us this evening. So- Why is that? Okay, great, sorry.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Ben Kim's unable to join us this evening. We send our best wishes to Ben, Caroline, Caroline Severa, and Ashley Manavare on their future endeavors as they have contributed greatly to the school board and our efforts this year. They can't be thanked enough, and I think they can put on their resume that they served on a school board during the pandemic. And wow, right? What a resume that'll be, Dr. Waltz. Do we have the video? Did, were we able to correct? They think they did, or they think they do? Okay. Do, are we, oh yeah, let's give it a try, and then we'll, then we'll go to Dr. Waltz. This is a, a video from Chair Wheeler from the Board of County-
It is often said that it takes a village to raise and nurture a child. There is no doubt that our superintendent, Dr. Stephen Waltz, has been at the helm of our village, nurturing, educating, and supporting the students of Prince William County Public Schools. Since the start of his tenure in 2005, Dr. Waltz has provided excellent leadership in managing one of the country's largest and fastest-growing school systems, overseeing over 90,000 students, 100 school centers, and over 11,500 employees. During his tenure, our school system has made great accomplishments, increasing our on-time graduation rate from 83% to 93%, providing services in over 100 languages for our diverse community, and supporting the success of our most vulnerable students, resulting in our school system meeting and exceeding state averages in all content areas. Dr. Waltz has propelled Prince William County schools to success through both good and challenging times in the world. He has led our school system through the economic upheaval of 2008, and most recently, through the worldwide pandemic that saw our school system innovate to provide continuous education to our students. In his 16 years leading our school system, he has directed the opening of 24 new schools, the implementation of full-day kindergarten, and the progression of specialty programs to serve every child's unique educational needs. Dr. Waltz, our county and our community are indebted to you. As you progress onto the next phase, you leave behind a legacy and impact that will be continually felt by students, staff, parents, and the greater Prince William County community. Thank you for your service, and we all continue to build upon your success.
Thank you to Madam Chair Wheeler and the entire Board of County Supervisors for that. Dr. Waltz, we'll move on to superintendent's time, your last superintendent's time.
My last one, and it's short. My gift. Good evening again. I would like to recognize the class of 2021. With a pandemic, I recognize our seniors experienced the school year much differently, learning to engage virtually with their teachers, classmates, and friends. Senior events were also much different, and I am amazed with the resiliency of this class. They have made us all very proud, and I am excited to witness the outstanding impact they will have on our world in the future. I was honored to attend 11 live and two asynchronous graduations. Congratulations, 2021 graduates. I'm proud to say that I have made it to, now, these are the ones we recorded, 2,158 school visits since I arrived in 2005, including recently Petomac Shores Middle School, Gainesville High School, and our new transportation center with an automated bus car wash. We wash, we used to wash all 900 buses by hand. I would like to extend my very best wishes to Dr. McDade as she takes the leadership position of the school division on July 1st, and I will continue to help her in any way that suits her needs. As this is my last business meeting as the superintendent for Prince William County Schools, I want to recognize and thank our students for always impressing me with their talents, their knowledge, and our teachers, administrators, and support staff throughout the division who inspire me daily with their passion for students, innovation, creativity, and kindness. I also wish to thank our parents and guardians, business and nonprofit partners, and our community at large for the warm welcome and care of me and my family for the past 16 years. We have made many lifelong friends here, and I appreciate it more than you know. I would like to thank our school board members, past and present, for the opportunity to serve this school division. I wish each of you the best. And in closing, I share one of my favorite quotes from one of my favorite writers, Maya Angelou. Quote, "I've learned that people will never forget what you said. People will forget what you do." Let me start this over. "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." God bless you.
Next, moving on to 1701, one-time employee pay adjustment, a motion's in order, Ms. Argapor.
Dr. Latif, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve a plan using $20,207,427 in year-end funds to provide all active employees a one-time pay adjustment for the purpose of recognizing the extraordinary contributions and sacrifices made by all Prince William County Public School employees during the COVID pandemic with the balance of year-end funds reserved for enrollment uncertainty. All active full-time employees will receive a one-time pay adjustment of $1,600 prorated for those working part-time and start date with a minimum of $500. All active substitutes, temporary employees, and retirement opportunity employees who earned a minimum of $1,000 this past year will receive a one-time payment, a pay adjustment of $500.
A second?
A second.
Ms. Jesse seconds the motion. We'll open the floor for discussion. Anybody have any thoughts? Ms. Jesse?
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Waltz and Mr. Wallingford because I know, Mr. Wallingford in the room here, I, oh, hi. I know I, I bugged you about this hazard pay, and now we're calling it a bonus. I called it hazard pay back in 2020 because at that time, I felt it was a hazard for teachers, and many people were involved in this process. Teachers will do anything, and they are amazing people, and I think they deserve this bonus. I want to also thank the central office staff, the teachers and secretaries and principals who came to work during March when this, this whole thing happened. Some of us forget, there were people at central office and in our schools early on. To those who would like to have an equitable bonus, I've talked to several principals about this, and they, they reminded me that there were people who came to school on their own. They weren't paid. There were principals who were in their buildings since March. There were some teachers who were selected by principals, and I understand why Dr. Waltz and Mr. Wallingford said it was a very difficult task. I want to thank this, the people who just assumed different duties, like counselors who became different, assumed different roles. The other night, we were at this meeting, and they said, "We know, need so many counselors." She said, "If counselors could just do their job, that would be one thing. We wouldn't need as many counselors." But counselors and nurses and all the various people, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, I want to thank you. I was, at the end of the year, I was going through the drive-through. I went through several drive-throughs and graduations. At graduation, I noticed that the principal at Cogan said he had how many plans? Four or five plans? In case, he had an outdoor plan, he had this kind of plan, all kinds of plans. The principals, I understand how challenging it's been for you. As I went through the drive-throughs, I saw several activities where teachers just show up and make things look good for kids. These fifth graders, they were out there with balloons. But I want to talk about one graduation, one fifth grade, it's not a graduation promotion, that I saw that reminds me of how great our teachers are. And that was at Alcoquan Elementary. School ended in the middle of the day at 7:00. Every single member of that staff was there. They had signs, they had placards everywhere. I do want to ask Mr. Wallingford if he could maybe explain the rubric and also when they will see the money. These are just very simple questions, like when will they see the money? And Fokier, Fokier was the first one to give bonuses, and they said $1,000 after taxes. I'd like to know that. So if you could answer that, I don't know if you want to do that right now or wait for other people. But I want to thank you for helping us with the rubric and coming together. And I also want to thank Dr. Waltz, the first plan. You know, I didn't agree with the plan, but I agree with your right to present that plan, and I really appreciate you sharing that plan with us. Thank you.
So I can tell you, if you vote this through tonight, then it will be on the employee's last paycheck or their next paycheck. And then, as far as the mathematics behind it, Mr. Wallingford, if you can explain it for a fifth grader?
I have difficulty with that sometimes, Dr. Waltz, I realize that. So the rubric or the method that we chose to actually do the math, I refer to it as the math problem, is setting several different parameters, a variety of different ways. Keith Iman, Mr. Iman and I discussed this over a period of probably running about a month, on and off, and on and off, and on and off. And we, we came up with a variety of different scenarios, with different caps and different floors and different criteria. And in consultation with Mr. Iman, this is what we came up with. Mr. Iman shared that with board members, and that's what's come out the other end here this evening. The source of the funds-
Didn't have a mic on. Did you hear Ms. Source? Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Jesse, the source of the funds, we spoke earlier briefly about year-end funds. There's about $35 or $36 million left, a small portion of which we're spending on, on those few items I mentioned. We have $35 million left. From that $35 million, we will make this bonus payment in early July.
I want to thank you for keeping your word because every time I said I was bugging you, you said I wasn't bugging you, but every time you said, and Dr. Waltz said, "We will look into it," and I appreciate that. And all the members of this board appreciate it, I'm sure. These people have said that the board is split, or certainly the board is not split. We all care about kids, we all care about teachers, but we know that kids can't teach themselves. And the bus drivers and all the various people, there was a lady named Naomi, and I won't give her last- give her last name, whose husband had to have a heart transplant, and these people still went to work. And so I just want to thank all of you for all that you've done and to thank the administrative staff for your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wallingford, would you clarify, was I wrong about it being on the last check of June?
That's correct, Dr. Walts.
I was wrong.
You were wrong, yes, sir.
All right, so it's going to be a special check that employees will receive?
It will be a separate payment made in the month of July.
Thank you.
Is that, I'm sorry, one other question. Is that Falkier, they say was $1,000, and that did not include taxes? Is it 1,600? Will the taxes be taken out at a certain point or a certain time? I'm just asking that question.
Yes, ma'am, I have nothing to do with the federal government. They will take their piece, as will the state and FICA. So a $1,600 bonus will be reduced by about 35%.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, since we're talking about this, I just also have to recognize all the staff who's been working really since last March. I think one of the things that the public probably doesn't understand is, we talk about bonuses for employee, there were so many people who came that didn't have a clock to clock into, that were out there serving meals, helping schools gear up or prepare, IT professionals over the summer working, and everyone didn't clock in, and I hear that a lot. Well, how can you tell who was where? How are we going to do this as equitably as possible? And it's almost insanely impossible to try to divvy it up individual by individual about their individual contributions because so many people just came out and showed up and did the work. And I think that's really important to acknowledge. I also want to acknowledge some of the comments that I see. There's a, there's a lot of conversation out there, I guess, on the internet about the difference between the staff in the Kelly Building and the staff in, in school buildings and things of that nature. I just want to remind people again that our administrative staff, our executive staff does the job of, you know, this year, probably six or seven individuals, where it's normally three or four. So while they, there's, look, I get it. In my other professional life, I've been an administrator, it's always been the battle of, well, you can't do your job if you're not physically at your desk. And I think this year has been a, this past year has been a great example of how people can get their jobs done, even if they're not in their normal work location. It doesn't stop the work. So I wanted to make sure that I recognized those comments and made it very clear that everyone had a different role, but everyone wore more than one hat this year at all times, and really thankful to all of the staff and everyone who came out to make this year as painless as we possibly could, because it was painful, for all of our students and our family and the staff who supported each other. And I also want to thank Dr. Walts and Mr. Emon for bringing this up from the division side. I want to thank my fellow board members for working collaboratively for this end result because it took a lot of twists and turns to get here. And I also want to acknowledge something else. Mr. Wallingford, and I'm sure you are the, the king of numbers here and how things can be worked out. I just have to advocate for all of my wonderful food service employees, who I am slightly biased because they do sometimes give me snacks, so, in full disclosure. But I, I understand a lot of them are technically part-time employees by their contract, but they do a lot more, and I'm sure are custodians and bus drivers as well. But I think there's certain limitations, and if there's, I'm just going to make my personal plea, if there's any way that we can advocate to get them a little bit better share of the bonus and not $500, I'm sure they would greatly appreciate it, although I don't want to interfere and make one group see more than the other because that's not what I'm saying. I just understand that there's different parameters on to how much they can work because of the nature of their job. And if we can't, I just wanted to also take this time to thank them and acknowledge that and let them know that they are seen. And I understand that the way that their hours present is different than some of our other staff members. And I think we don't spend enough time talking about them and how they show up early and how they were out there in March feeding people as well as the bus drivers, because I know I was out there too. But I want to make sure that they were acknowledged too because they're often left out of the conversation when it comes to that. So, thank you, and that's all I had.
Mr. Wolk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brief remarks about this bonus for those. In a profession, you will have people who meet the challenge, people who rise above the challenge, and people who use the challenge to completely reinvent themselves. You will also people who, for whatever reason, are unable to rise to the occasion. However, our teachers and our staff members are the ones who interact with our children every day. They are the ones who see them get onto their bus, eat in the cafeterias, play on their playground, and learn in their classrooms or virtual environments. This group of professionals are responsible for far more than just educating our children. They are given the monumental task of meeting social and emotional needs as well as academic needs in differentiating their lessons and instruction to make sure that every single student, no matter what their ability or gaps in education are, no matter what their social, economic status or their current life conditions are for their learning. This is a tremendous task, even in a perfect situation. So when we talk about staff pay or bonuses and raises, I ask you to think about the teachers that were there for your children, the teachers and staff that went the extra mile, the ones who stood out to you and your family, the cafeteria workers who stood out in the pouring rain to pass out meals to families, the custodians who worked around the clock to prepare the buildings for our students and staff, the special education teachers who have been back in the building since August and had almost an impossible task of revising thousands of IEPs. But they made it happen, and they made it happen for our children. I ask you to focus on how we keep those teachers and incredible staff members. How in the future are we going to retain them? Because we all know that teachers and any staff member that works with students do what they do because they love kids and their jobs, but they also have to be able to survive financially. My colleagues will tell you, for a while, I pushed and advocated for a stratified plan, honoring those who potentially came in since last March or this fall. I was told repeatedly that this would really not be an easy solution, and there was no one easy formula to be able to calculate how this would be done. And there are gazillion scenarios that we would have to answer in trying to stratify the plan, as one of our speakers advocated for tonight. With that being said, and not to delay this process, I think we have a fair plan created in collaboration by this board. And I support this bonus for all staff members because I support the education and the overall investments in our students. So I thank my colleagues for the collaboration. Thank you, Dr. Walts, and your staff, Mr. Wallingford. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
I also want to echo extreme thanks to the board and the division staff for their collaboration on this plan. This plan ultimately considers all employees who fed our families, changed student diapers, wrote hundreds of IEPs, scheduled and rescheduled students, drove students, ordered PPE, gave board presentations at the board meetings. Ultimately, we were all in this pandemic as one. But this plan, to me, considers the individual needs of all employees. So with that, I just want to say I fully support this pay adjustment. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Mr. Wallingford, I want, I have a question for you. So my understanding is that the 30, 35 million, I know at the beginning of our budget process last year, we set aside a certain amount of funds. We deferred some projects that we'd already approved in our budgets, turf fields and things like that. We set those funds aside because we knew we had a pandemic coming. And so this 36 or 35 million, I guess, that's left over, that money is that primarily those set-aside funds that now we are accessing? Or is it a combination of set-aside funds and maybe S R funds or additional resources of revenue?
Sure. So, very good question. First thing I'd like to make clear, the funding, the source for this pay adjustment is not from federal money. It is not, okay? First, first thing. Second thing, like you say, we did defer about $17 million in capital projects during the budget process going into fiscal 2021, excuse me. And those projects have been bond funded, and that freed up the budget authority in the current year. And that is part of the year-ending balance that you saw earlier today that was about $36 million, from which we pulled a little money to pay for a couple of items, like the lights and the, the radio systems. The other source of funding, the other reason we have such a large balance at the end of this year, and I alluded to this a little bit earlier in, in our conversation, and that is, this year was, to say the least, extraordinarily unique, both from the pandemic standpoint and from a financial standpoint. When our enrollment numbers came in, 3,000 or 4,000, about 3,000, 3,000 students under what our forecast was, what we would have expected and what has happened every other year is that we would sweep money back from school and departmental budgets, but we would also lose revenue from the state. And so what happened this year, late, late in the year, so we couldn't make adjustments earlier in the year, was the state, in their last special session, decided that they would hold us harmless from that enrollment reduction. And what that did was that provided us additional budget authority that we couldn't, there's no way we could have forecasted that that would happen. And that's actually a conversation that we had over a year ago. The concern I had was that we would end up with more money at year-end than you typically would like to have, but there was no way around dealing with it. So that answers your question. The sources of those funds are really deferred projects and unanticipated for revenues in excess of our expenditure budgets.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, that answers my question. So I think that's important to highlight because there's, you know, some concern, of course, from citizens that perhaps this money should just be given back, or especially residents who saw tax increases and didn't get pay raises and maybe lost their jobs, et cetera, you know, so there's some, that question. But I do wish to point out that it sounds like primarily from deferred costs is where we are having this money or getting this money, and in addition to careful budgeting and anticipation of our, of our needs and the state explanation that Mr. Wallingford gave us. I wanted to address a concern that was raised by the community. You know, there are, there were so many sacrifices made by everybody this year across the division from every kind of employee, and we have lots of different categories and kinds of employees in Prince William County. It's unless, you know, lacking perfect knowledge, it's impossible to determine whose contribution was worth more than somebody else's. And who is to say that going into the building, for instance, was any less hard than somebody having to learn to teach completely online in a completely new environment? That's just one example. And we had, you know, many teachers who were, were not able to go in for very legitimate reasons, who yet gave countless hours, be above and beyond their contracts, to help students. So I think that's, you know, why I, I am in favor of a plan like this over one that kind of prioritized people going into the building because there were so many contributions that were made regardless of where you worked. And I like to think of it as an analogy to the body, you know, as members of a body. The I can't really say to the hand, "Well, your contribution is not as much as mine," or nor could a head say to the feet, "My contrib, your contribution is less than mine, I'm more important than you." You know, every single member of the body is important. And I feel like what we've tried to do here is, is get to that principle that we value the contributions of everybody, regardless of what we've asked you to do, regardless of what your title is. Obviously, it's not perfect, and some people have issues with it. However, you know, the intent is to show the value that we place in the extraordinary contributions that have been made. And each one of you listening, whoever you are, wherever you are, you know the contributions that you made. But we don't know everything. We are not omniscient. However, we're all part of the team. We're all part of the body. Every single one of us an important member of the body of Prince William County Schools. So I am in favor of this initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll, I'll make this super quick. I just want to thank, first of all, the board for everybody contributing their ideas and their thoughts. And yes, we have all had very many different ideas about what we could do or what we should do, and this is where we landed. And I am, I just want to thank each and every one of you for, for all the work that we have had to do to collaborate. And then division staff for working with us to help make this possible. I, I can't say it enough that everybody, just like Ms. Wall said, we're, we're all part of the system, and we all had a role to play. And it, it is really hard to say whose contrib, you can't say somebody's contribution is better than someone else's. I know that there's a lot of people who, you know, they taught from home, but they had to buy some equipment that made their teaching space more amenable to what they needed to do. There's teachers who bought subscriptions or took extra classes, not to mention the kind of time that some of, these positions don't earn over time. If it takes you 60 hours to get a job done, it does. If it takes you 20, yay, but, you know, it never does, by the way. But, you know, it, it kind of recognizes all those things. And so from people who, who were working in, in the buildings in March to the very last day of school, it's, it's, this plan with all of us working together, division and school board, is the, the one we landed on, and I'm grateful for all the work. So thank you.
Ms. Wall, I'll quibble with your body analogy. The eye, as an eye surgeon, really the rest of the body exists to support the eye and everything the eye does. So, yes, thank you. The, but, but very good analogy. I'd like to remind the, the public as we're reflecting on, on the leadership of our school division, Dr. Walts and Mr. Emon, this school division never furloughed a single employee during the recession. This school division never furloughed a single employee during the recovery of the recession. This school board and this superintendent, last year on March 11th, Wednesday night, had spirited discussions in the hallways, in the rooms here, and maybe even in closed session, on making sure that if we do shut down, if this pandemic does do this to us, those people who could be thrown out of work, we need to do everything we can to support them. And that happened March 11th, March 12th came, and March 13th, the morning of the shutdown happened. And Dr. Walts held to his commitment to making sure we supported all of our employees, contracted, non-contracted, part-time, full-time. We, we worked hard to, to, to give opportunities to substitutes. We struggled to get substitutes. This effort tonight is part of the entire effort over the course of 16 years of that spirit of taking care of the employees. We were voted the number-one school division due work for in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is because of these, these values, this leadership. That leadership was exemplified throughout the most horrific time in the nation's history of an incredible pandemic. And this will be another example of that effort of, of the board working together with the division staff and superintendent on trying to do what fits within those values. And so I want to thank Dr. Walts. Key theme on Mr. Wallingford, I think it's important as Ms. Wall, as, as Ms. Wall represents, as, as Ms. Wall asks the question about where the money came from. This school division and, and Dr. Walts held off on making a decision on this until after the budgeting season because, you know, there were rumors we would be held harmless. We were told we could be held harmless, but we were never guaranteed that. The school division paid for the pandemic with whatever monies we could get, excess, whatever monies we could save in a very fiscally responsible manner, not ever depending on the possibility of getting this 15 to 20 million dollars, held harmless monies. We took the $17 million of deferred projects. We bonded those projects. We did some absolutely creative bonding and lending and borrowing last year, rates that were historic. The creativity of the entire finance staff, Dr. Walts, to do that allowed us to realize $37 million more in fund, in, in, in fundings. And so, you know, take that into account. At the same time, last year, March 13 subsequent to that, we cut the raise in, in, in half or more than half. And so the board had committed at that point also, Dr. Walts also committing that if at any point we could find a way to restore the COLA, which was, you know, that's a really tough thing to do because you build that on year after year, and that's not an easy thing to do. That requires much more money than, than what was achieved here. But, but we, we've been able to do that, and that is from fiscal responsibility, tight budgeting, extraordinary management at all levels with every single principal, every single outfit in this division, and it didn't happen by accident. So we didn't get to this vote tonight just by, you know, like a lottery. This is actual work that came through that, that's going to benefit. This is actual work that came through that, that's going to benefit. So I fully support this effort. I think it's also important to remember, and, and, you know, with all the, you know, recognition we did for Dr. Waltz earlier and, and here, we had forgot to mention that no furlows. And I think we may have been one of the only school divisions to have been able to not furlough anyone, Dr. Waltz, during the recession. Is that correct? Right. And so, and, and also didn't fail to mention that, you know, Dr. Waltz had come to here, come to here from, from New York after 9/11 and seen, seen, seen the school system through that there. And so anyways, I fully support this. I have two things we got to do. We have to go to Diane Ralston, which I may have skipped, and then I have a conflict of interest statement Mr. Will needs to read. Ms. Ralston?
I'm sorry. What did, can you repeat this?
Great. Ms. Ralston, just checking, do you, do you support the bonus? Are you, do you have any comments regarding the salary bonus adjustment? Are you good with? Okay, great. Mr. Will, can you read your conflict of interest statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pursuant Declaration of Personal Interest pursuant to Prince William County, County Policy 114, Conflict of Interest and Virginia's Local and State Conflict of Interest Act in conjunction with this vote, I am confirming in open session that the school board, the superintendent and his staff and I, by virtue of this declaration, the public have been informed the fact that my wife is an employee of Prince William County Public Schools. I confirm that this relationship will not prevent me from voting on this matter impartially, fairly, objectively, and solely in the public interest.
Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Did you hear me?
Yes, you said yes?
Yes.
Wonderful. Ms. Ralston votes yes. I'm voting yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
There it goes. Okay, wonderful. All right. Very good. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the fall return of school buildings. Dr. Waltz, 1702.
Thank you very much. So this is an update requested by the school board. So you received a few weeks ago the Return to Learning Plan, and I was asked to just basically, where are we today and what does it look like going forward? Next slide, please. So you've seen this slide before. Number one talks about what was passed by Virginia state law. Basically, the most important thing here under number one is the school board may provide fully remote virtual instruction option. Number two is the board's directive to me and the administration, which in that, the board decided they did want to provide that 100% virtual option for all students and all grade levels. Again, you've seen that before. Next slide, please. This has to do with direction from the Virginia Department of Education, but it is also codified in state law for part of the COVID transition. And essentially what it says is that anyone who chooses the virtual instruction next year shall be able to go back to in-person in a seamless and as soon as possible. So if you, even if you choose virtual, you can go back to in-person. Next slide, please. So we've done a survey and our survey results essentially show that approximately 95% of parents choose to have their children at this point in time in-person and about 5% virtual. Next slide, please. So how do we plan for this? Well, if parents don't opt in for the virtual, then we assume that they're coming in-person. And number two, it is our intent to normalize operations, but we will certainly adjust if there's anything from the Virginia Department of Health, the Virginia Department of Education, or the Centers for Disease Control, if we have new guidance this summer, which guidance continues to come, and we will expect additional guidance to come this summer. Number three, the virtual option again will be provided at all grade levels, and we, to the extent possible, will be eliminating concurrent instruction. Number four, the high school students, in terms of those who choose an all-virtual program, will be served primarily by Virtual Virginia, Virtual Prince William, and the Independence Non-Traditional School. Also, we want to make sure that everybody understands that we will be paying for these things. So whether you're in-person or virtual. Number five, regardless of the choice that's made, the base school is still responsible for services like IEPs, counselors, making sure the students have computers. Number six, middle and elementaries will be served through virtual selections at their base school or, on exception, through collaboration across schools. So again, I gave examples at two previous meetings. You know, if there's a, two fifth graders at an elementary school that want virtual and they're the only two students in that school community, and we may have some of those, we may choose to hook them up with the school up the street and the virtual program that they have there in the event that there are more virtual students at that school. So there'll be a small amount of that. Next slide, please. I want to be clear about the bell schedules. So because of the requirements by the Virginia Department of Health, the CDC, and the Virginia Department of Education, we had some schools that had two bus runs this year, in the morning and in the afternoon. We had a handful of elementary schools. I want to say approximately 12, something like that. And they had first and second runs. We will only be doing this if we are required to do so. So it is looking as though with our 95% return in-person, that if we had to have the distances we have now, we would have to have these second bus runs. We're anticipating and hoping that we will not, and we will use mitigations like masks on the bus to return our bell times to the pre-pandemic normal times. That will be the goal, the pre-pandemic normal times. Again, if you go back to number two, if we're required by Virginia Department of Health or VDOE to do something different, we want to be prepared to pivot either way. But our strong hope and our sense at this time is that we will return to a pre-pandemic bus run schedule. Also want to make it clear, again, you know, we, we've had a year plus of this. So on number four, we want to make sure it's clear that the virtual sections at middle and elementary schools will have a daily bell schedule. They'll have a schedule just like they've had these last several weeks of school. The exceptions to that are the programs we have now, Virtual Prince William and Virtual Virginia. Those are designed to be accessed at various times that might be outside of a regular bell schedule. Next slide, please. So the board has had an interest in looking at school start times and how that affects elementary, middle, and high school students. In spite of the pandemic and all the changes that we were making and all the things that we had to accommodate, we still did a review of the research, and certainly we know that delaying school start times for students 10 and up is beneficial to their health and well-being. Our Office of Accountability under the great Dr. Casada did a lit review and developed a brief summarizing the research and the potential start times model. So these models are in number three, and there's three models. Invert their traditional schedule and start high schools later by moving elementary first, keeping middle schools where they are, and then doing high schools. Model number two, you keep the exact same order you have now. You have high school kids go in first, followed by middle, then elementary, but you delay everything. The research says, you know, if you can start those older kids at 8:30, at least by 8:30, you could run it just like we do now, but you have to push it to 8:30. Model three is you would start high school and middle school at the same time and no earlier than 8:30 with elementary students starting earlier. Now, there's some implications for these models, which we'll discuss in a moment. Regardless of the model selected, the research indicates change requires advanced planning, transparency, and extensive stakeholder involvement. That's what the research says is the best way to proceed if you want to do this. Next slide, please. This explains why that involvement is important. So let's look at the first model that we talked about on the previous slide. This is the inversion of the order. So we basically flip high school and elementary. Minimal cost to do that. Community and employee impact is substantial, and you can see the reasons why. You've got changes in daycare, changes in sports times, employers, parental and work schedules. Number two, keep the order the same in terms of you start with high school kids, then middle, then elementary, but you start no earlier than 8:30. Again, minimal cost. There's substantial community and employee impact, and it's essentially the exact same reasons as the first model. Number three, start high school and middle school at the same time but no earlier than 8:30. Now, there's a substantial cost involved with that model because you'd have to have about 486 more drivers and 88 more aides. So there's a big cost to that. The community and employee impact is more moderate. You still have, you know, some schedules and that sort of thing, but it's less disruptive than the second model. Next slide, please. Before we go to the next slide, let me just say that, you know, again, the research is saying, you know, you, you need time to really work through this with a community. This board has heard me say this more times in the last year and since a year and a half or whatever it's been than in all the other years combined. There's almost nothing we can't do. This school division's administration and the, the people who make these things happen can do almost anything. But I think it's only fair to say that as a school board, I won't be here, obviously, but as a school board, if you make one of these changes without going through all that input, you're going to pay a price. Can you pay that price? Yes. Yes. Now, another thing I've heard is we understand the research, but we know what the research is. Fairfax has done this. We know what that research is. Yes, we do. So yes, you could circumvent that process. I just wanted to give my one little farewell thought there because, again, I'll just be reading about this in the paper and online. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's talk a little bit. This is the last thing that you asked me to, or almost the last thing you asked me to cover tonight, and that is the input that federal laws requiring for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. So what they're essentially asking as a part of getting these grant funds, which are substantial, is to make sure that the community has input so that when the administration makes recommendations to the school board and you ultimately decide and work with the new administration coming in on this, that there has been an opportunity for input. So we had, we had the public meeting last night. We've had online surveys that are open until the 18th. We've already collected over 5,600 responses, so we'll continue doing that and we'll put that together for you so you can see what people had to say, try to group those things. The school board has chosen, even though it's not required, to provide yet another opportunity with a school board hearing on June 22nd. So the public can actually come directly before the school board itself and speak, or if you didn't have a chance to come the 15th, you could come the 22nd. Number four, the staff will work with Dr. McDade on a draft plan and coordinate that plan with the school board. Number five, we have to post that plan once, once we have a, a plan. It has to be posted for 30 days on our website. And then, number six, 90-day plan must be posted to the Prince William County website by August 1st. We have an application that's due on September 1st, and then the Department of Education tells us that they believe they can approve the plans at approximately mid-October. So you can see that most of this is going to happen after I've said hasta la vista. But again, you know, I think, you know, we have, we have things in place. We have already had numerous discussions about this, and when I say numerous discussions, what I'm saying is you know what we have planned for some of this money, but we set aside, at least I have to this point, a substantial amount of that money because we don't know what's in front of us, and I want to make sure Dr. McDade and all of you as school board members have flexibility and substantial funds moving forward once I'm gone. Last slide. So as with all these crazy things that have happened the last year and several months, this plan is subject to change, and further details will be refined based on updates from CDC, VDH, VDOE, and/or the governor. The governor weighs in on, on some of these things. Number two, the incoming superintendent, Dr. McDade, may choose to evolve or change aspects of the plan as she gets her feet on the ground and she begins working with you. Well, the fact of the matter is she's already working with me and she's already working with you because I'm well aware that she's already had meetings and conversations, which is good. Number three, updates to the plan will be communicated throughout the summer to you and to our greater community and parents. And that concludes my update.
Excellent, Dr. Waltz. I, just for the, for everyone to know that I had made the request, maybe a couple other members had also wanted to know where the research was on the start times. And, and so I think that the history on that was in January of 2020. In February, we had started this along with our student members and, and, and all of us sort of thinking, wow, this could be something we would do and it would be great. And, and we were hoping to do the, if I, let me read your slide because it's very well put. The re, the change requires the advanced planning, transparency, extensive stakeholder involvement was, the hope was that was going to happen through the spring of 2020, summer of 2020, and then the pandemic blew the hell out of all that. So we just wanted to get an, get an idea where we were on that. I, I don't think there's anybody on the board who wants to avoid all of that effort and, and, and recognize that it would be near impossible to do it for this fall in, in light of continued unpredictability with where we're going to be. So, but I want to thank you for, for bringing that research to us and, and recognizing that that was something this board was very interested in, in doing, and, and we recognize a community has a sincere interest in this either way and all sides. So thank you for that, and I think that's great. We'll go one round of questions and then we'll move on. I'll, I'll go with, I think Ms. Zargarpur was up first.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Dr. Waltz, I'm going to talk about specialists in elementary and our, our music and arts people and our, our teachers who teach one subject. When it comes to concurrent teaching, there's some When it comes to concurrent teaching, there's some people who are a little nervous about that. So have there been any talks or thoughts about to, to keep those folks from having to be concurrent? I, I, you know, teaching one fifth grade class concurrently, one fourth grade class, one third grade, it, it, it adds up to be a little bit stressful. So is there, has there been any talk about maybe arranging that between schools and, you know, what are, what are some of the things that are going on with, and I know we have CTE and other things that are in the same boat.
Right. I, I think the greatest collaboration on that will be at the elementary level where we'll try to make every effort. And then, you know, I, I gotta say that, believe it or not, there's actually some teachers that have fed down to a science almost. I mean, it's, for some, it's like, this has just been near to impossible, and, and for others, they've come up with lesson plans and things that work well. But in direct answer to your question, it's, it's been my charge to the staff that we do everything we can to eliminate it whenever we can. And, and yes, to work across schools, especially for things like encore.
Yeah, I, I think, I've heard from several teachers that they're okay if they have to teach something virtual, they're okay if they have to teach something in person, they, they just, that, that's fine. And then, yeah, I, and I know there's some classes that might work better than others, but, and, and then the other thing was, was coming out of maybe some of the secondary folks. They, they had a couple of questions about that, too. But is there any way to sort of collaborate, you know how we do like all county and things like that? Is there maybe a way to do like a all-county virtual orchestra, things like that for those kids who may be choosing?
Well, let me just say that I've met with each of the three levels of high school principals about the plan a few weeks back, and essentially what I've told them is use all the creativity you can muster to make this as smooth for the staff, for the teaching staff, because the smoother it is for the staff, the more effective it will be for the children and their families. The more people are satisfied with the teaching responsibilities that they have, I think the better this will all work. So they certainly know from me and the level associates that we're looking for innovation and the best way to make this work.
Thank you. I, I know, I know it's hard sitting in this part of June to make, some of this stuff is going to change anyway because of the state. But I, I, I just want teachers to know and parents who have, have brought this up that what it looks like right this second is, is going to be different in the fall. So thank you for, for those words and thoughts.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So I, to piggyback on what Ms. Argore was saying is I think it's really important for parents to know when we talk about the fall return to learn that everything, every decision on what school looks like is not necessarily up to this board, like we've learned in the past year. There are decisions that come down from the, the state, there's decisions that come down from the federal government that we have to be in compliance with, and I just want to remind our listening body that that's been a big chunk of our changes and, and requirements and mandates. It's not necessarily always this board making that decision. Sometimes a decision is made for us and we have to comply. So I think that that's really important. I'm sure there are a lot of parents who, like me, before this pandemic, had their calendar planned out six months in advance and their kids' clothes bought for the next season before and all of those things, and that's been hard during this pandemic because none of those rules apply. And I just want to remind parents that to continue to bear with us and be a little bit more, be a little bit flexible, a few of us on the board are also parents, so we understand, we have school-aged children, we understand how difficult that can be, especially now when you really just want solid answers, and we're doing the best that we can to provide them. But I just want to make it clear that just to keep an open mind and understand that some of these things may change. And then, as one of the longest-serving board members up here and Chairman Latif, if you wouldn't know this, this start change, the bell changed times. Dr. Waltz, you may remember because you have an impeccable memory, it's just amazing. This was something like I, I think, I don't know if you were on the board yet or not, Justin, but Brad brought up, I think, right before Fairfax made their change several years ago, and they flipped the school times. We had talked about this, and I just want to thank the student representatives again for putting it back on the radar and personally making me seem less like I have a tree growing out of the side of my head because that's how everyone looked at me when I talked about it years ago. Because that's when it was trendy and the research had come out and nobody was buying into it except the people who wrote the research probably and, and me, and I don't remember who else was on the board at that time. But I, I just think that that is, Ms. Jessie, sorry, Ms. Jessie. Yes, forever, because you, you have been here longer than me. But I, I, I hope that we can reach a point where we are able to make a change to start times, and I recognize that that is not a smart decision to do for the upcoming school year, but maybe something that the community, we need to take community input on and really look at not just what the community says, but the research says, what our students say, and what our parents say as a holistic picture and making that decision. So I just want to thank the students for really pushing that and making a reality and something that we now see on a, on a PowerPoint slide. And Dr. Waltz, I want to thank you for putting, working on this return to learn plan. It's got to be difficult when you are heading out, but I do appreciate all the work that you've put into this and the coordination that you've had with our incoming superintendent, Dr. McDade, because it's very challenging closing an administration and something that you've done and then handing it over to someone else. But I think that the collaboration shown between an outgoing administration and an incoming administration with so many unknowns is worth a moment of praise, so thank you.
Dr. McDade.
Ms. Jessie.
I, the bus schedule, of course, bothers me at that elementary level. So it sounds like the mitigation strategies will come into play, so if nothing changes, you will be able to not have two buses, buses in the morning. Am I right?
That's, that's our goal.
Okay. The other item is the, the slide, I think it's slide four, where we talk about five percent virtual, and when you divide that across elementary schools, I could just, how's that going to work? Because I could see a school having one or two or three kids and then having to share a teacher and then share the money and then share the responsibility for learning and the selection of the teacher. Have you guys thought about that? Because five thousand, I mean, five percent is not a large number of kids, considering how many elementary schools.
We've had a lot of conversations about that, absolutely. And again, we're also encouraging counselors to reach out to the families because, again, you know, you've given us a directive as a board that we are to provide this virtual learning, but you didn't say you couldn't talk to the parents to say that, well, we would really encourage you to, to let your child come back in person. So we're also encouraging conversations between not just principals, because they're very, very busy, everybody's busy, but also counselors and even teachers, because our goal is to try to get the kids back in person. And then to your point about if you have a couple of kids, well, what's the nearest elementary to Vaughn?
Probably Kilby.
So, you know, if...
Kilby has, I mean, you've got to hope that you can find a...
A match. If you've got three kids from Vaughn second grade that want to do all virtual and you've got three spots over at Kilby, then it'll be a technological transfer for that year for that child to be over at Kilby virtually.
I can just, I can see this being a nightmare for principals and, and I think encouraging parents, I could see this being, well, who select the teacher? I don't know if I like this virtual teacher. Who, who is the base teacher? And so there are lots of things to consider with the small percentage, it's, it's going to create a problem.
You, you are correct, and, and I will say this, one thing that we talked about with, you know, the small number of people that may be concurrent and the people who are doing virtual, we want to make sure that the administration of each school collaborates in terms of making sure they're top-notch virtual teachers, just like we expect top-notch in-person, to your point.
I think you're going to be looking for a match.
I agree.
You're trying to, and the other question, I'm sure that this is a very simple answer. I'm not sure why the non-traditional, why, why is that one of the virtual pieces? Why is it listed?
Well, as you know, as well as anybody, Mr. Icorn has had some tremendous success with his, yeah, with his virtual component of his program. So the non-traditional school has moved from what used to be, you know, you were, you were moved there if you were, if there was a discipline issue. Well, we've greatly expanded the numbers and types of students who go to the non-traditional school, and some of them have been highly successful because maybe they need two or three courses virtually, and he's already been doing that pre-pandemic. So there are some opportunities there, and he has a good working relationship with the high school principals. So we wanted to create as many options as we could to, to tailor it to the kids that need it.
Did ask us a little question while we were there for the graduation about being considered for, as a specialty school. I don't know what that entailed, I'm just dropping that off, that little, little tidbit.
So noted.
Mr. Wilk? Couple of questions briefly. One thing, we were talking about letting principals be, be as creative as possible when I was talking to principals and touring schools last week, the last couple of days. If we have a decent stipend, and I'm not talking like thirty-five hundred dollars, but like five thousand plus for a teacher who voluntarily wants to do concurrent, I think we'll actually get some interest in possibly getting teachers who might want to teach concurrent if they choose so. I mean, I'm thinking of young teachers who moved down here with the cost of living. When I first moved down here, I took three coaching jobs and the drama director, so I coached football and taught drama, quite an interesting, you know, comparison there. But, so I think you're going to have a lot of people possibly motivated to, if we offer a decent stipend for people who might want to do concurrent. Have we had discussion about what that stipend would be?
Well, it's preliminary, and what we're waiting for is for the survey to close. So there's a few more days where parents have the ability to select. Then we need to, then there has to be a data analysis of by school, by individual grade so that we get that information I talked about, I think, maybe a month ago, where I said we would be now getting the information by child, by grade. And so when we see what the demand will be and how that all falls out, then we'll, we'll end up coming up with, with a stipend. But I know we've talked about a baseline of at least two thousand dollars, so might be higher. But we will have, we will have ESAR money. I don't, I don't pretend to know all the rules for ESAR money, but even if we have to switch some things around in the budget, we will do what we need to do to get quality teachers. If we need some concurrent instruction, we'll make sure that we get quality instruction and that we pay a differential to them.
Next question. So from my understanding, what I do is I know school systems all over the country, some of them are capitalizing this and building out very robust virtual programs, and neighboring districts may not be offering virtual, a similar situation that we might be having. Our numbers are low right now for virtual. One, I don't know under Virginia law, do we have open enrollment? So if children in Fairfax, Loudon, Stafford, who do not get the option for virtual in their districts, if the parents are willing to pay out-of-county tuition and enroll and have our teachers live synchronous teaching them, we take their FTE plus charge and the out-of-county tuition, are we allowed to do this? Hey, I can give you an example. For example, every district around Milwaukee right now is running radio ads in Milwaukee City Schools, trying to take those kids and get them enrolled in their districts. I'm a capitalist, I'm just thinking an opportunity for us to gain some serious financial support and expand our opportunities in this. I mean, if we're going to offer it, might as well have it and build it out.
Yeah, understood. So we can get that, we can dig into that a little bit more, but my understanding is if there's room and they're willing to pay, the answer is yes.
Outstanding. Would we be willing to run? Well, never mind. Okay. I, I just think it's an opportunity for us, especially if we're going to designate teachers into these rooms and stuff like that. It can really allow us to potentially grow and attract kids who might otherwise. Think of it, a kid in Loudon County who's very close to Battlefield High School, they want to go virtual, Battlefield has a full synchronous virtual program, we have the room for them. They're willing to pay the cost, the out-of-county tuition for us to be able to invest in our school system, why not take them?
Understood.
Jen, sounds like you. Sounds like I'm with you here. The other question I have real quick is where are we with the mask? We get hit, I'm getting a lot of questions about the mask policy for students. I know we're following guidelines from, I think we, I mean, I assume we are following various guidelines about masks, either kids wearing masks outside, kids masking in the classroom. Where are we currently, as things stand right now in the Commonwealth of Virginia with the recommendations from the VDH and the VDOE and all that?
So if you go to our health plan online, it'll show some of the individual exceptions like in athletics and inside versus outside, and for example, recess, if you can maintain the six-foot distance, you don't have to wear a mask. There was a recent change that just happened just days ago that said if you're in a school, on school property and there are no students there and you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. That's why we're not wearing masks tonight. So thankfully, they clarified that because I was scratching my head trying to figure out if you've been vaccinated, why do we have to wear a mask here? But now it's the same for schools. So when a lot of teachers who were in, maybe in the summer planning or that sort of thing, if it's not a summer school center, they don't have to wear masks. But again, that is, the governor's order is, still stands right now as of today. I'm not predicting the future, but as it still stands, if there are students in a building, then you need to wear a mask. Again, there are exceptions. If a teacher is in a classroom by him or herself and there are no students there, they can take their mask off. So, you know, again, if you, you can look at that health plan or the governor's order, but those things are evolving pretty quickly, and I anticipate they will continue if the numbers continue to go down.
Okay, so we are following the governor's order.
Yes, we are.
So I mean, people who are telling us to waive the mask plan, we're following the governor's order.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Jackson.
Thank you. Also, I had the same question about masks, so thank you for clarifying that. We were talking about the seamless enrollment from virtual to in-person and back and forth, and then there was the, the survey back in the end of May, which you said thankfully, as a parent, I appreciate it not being set in stone. But I also know that schools need to plan for the summer to kind of deal with the concurrent concerns that other board members mentioned. Is there going to be another survey that will be set in stone, or is it just continuously? Any discussion on a second, like locking in for the school year?
If you recall when I gave some of those examples about how principals have to figure out their staffing and they can't wait longer, so when I say it's not set in stone, we will make individual exceptions as we see necessary. But I will tell you what the trend is right now. The trend is that the parents are telling us as these cases go down and the safer it becomes, the more likely they are to change to go in-person. So what the law states and what we're happily prepared to do is even if it's only five percent, if you decide tomorrow you want to change from virtual to in-person, we will make that happen quickly and efficiently.
All right, thank you for clarifying. So kind of on the same planning discussion, will we give parents notification if there is a need for concurrent teaching?
It would be my expectation that any child that is in anything other than a regular in-person classroom, that there would be communication from that individual school on what that child's situation is going to be. You know, there may be a, a few exceptions that could be framed in a school's newsletter, like, you know, we have a physical education teacher who's going to be doing concurrent with, you know, two grade levels. But if it's going to be something that impacts a kid for the bulk of their day, we would expect that communication to go back and forth either between the teacher, an AP, an intern, or a counselor. between the teacher, an AP, an intern, or a counselor. And of course, thankfully, you as a board, put a lot more counselors in place. And so, you know, we're having the ability to have some of these discussions, which are very helpful.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate the presentation tonight, and I just wanna just touch on the bell, start the lead times, and I look forward to hearing more from the community. So, just thank you.
Ms. Wall?
All right. Some of the questions that I have have been asked and answered, like mask question, for instance, is really popular right now. A lot of people wanna know about it. It feels good to be without a mask. But, so I won't ask that question. But, I'll start out. My first question is, from our very first slide, I have, I just wanted, I know that my understanding is that we may provide, the SB 1303 is that we may provide a virtual option, correct? We must provide in-person, but we may provide a virtual option.
Correct.
And so, I suppose, and this is hypothetical, but if the board could therefore decide to vote not to give a virtual option, of course, there would be ramifications for that. I understand that. But like, that is a possibility, given the law, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
The board could change what it wants to do.
Right.
Depending upon, you know.
The circumstances.
Yeah, mitigation, and you know, the level of COVID in the community and that sort of thing. I mean, right now, thankfully, it's looking very good.
Exactly. I've been watching numbers really closely, and it's like.
And I would just say that even if the board decided to do that, there's always gonna be some exceptions, because we have Homebound, we have Home and Hospital, we have the Independent School. Those things are going to be a part of our school division. We have Virtual Virginia that, you know, we wouldn't necessarily normally use, but if it's a few people that, for whatever reason, it's really important to them. And then, of course, our own virtual program, which we plan to use anyway. So, some of these things would be in place even if the board decided to change its mind about that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. My second question is, should those numbers continue to decline, those who want the virtual option? You say, I think now that slide is about 95% want to be in-person, 95%, 5% want the virtual option. Should that decline to even a smaller percentage, like 97, 98, or even 99%, are we, I know you said we are giving schools flexibility to maybe just do something contained within their own school, or maybe, like, you know, reach out to a neighboring elementary school, so maybe three or four schools in an area could cluster together and combine their virtual students. If the numbers were to get low enough that that wasn't even really a great option, are we giving the planning folks, the operational side of things, the possibility to do something division-wide? What I'm thinking of is like all first graders, let's say we have all first graders across the division now, because we're down to 99% want to be in-person, we put them into like a virtual section or virtual sections of first grade?
So, what you approved in the budget was, we talked even, you know, pre-pandemic about looking at a virtual high school. So, you set aside some money in the budget and a position to go with it to work on that. Then, when there was interest, I remember Ms. Williams talked about the interest that, you know, I don't wanna speak for her as a mother, but, you know, she had a good experience with her child, and maybe she might wanna keep her child in virtual. And so, in the budget, you may recall, I also put an elementary position in to be working and studying on that. But I will just say, from, you know, last March forward, we are working on things seven days a week as an administration, and we will be monitoring those numbers like daily, and seeing, you know, how can we best serve even small numbers of students in the most efficient way. So, I, those things are possible.
Okay, thanks. My next question is, how are we going about getting the word out to families that the virtual option for next year is quite different from the virtual option that we had this year, including cameras and maybe even course offerings? I know we, I've seen some communication as a parent, you know, through email, and I just wonder if you could speak just a little bit more to that. I mean, I assume it's pretty proactive.
It is. And so, division-wide, the biggest way in which we communicate is with the scoop. That is our, like, number one. If you look at the user, the users of that, the hits on that, for example, that is, I would say, the most well-read and well-liked way we communicate. And we will continue to update. So, for example, when this next round closes after the 18th, and we put that data together, I'm sure they'll be putting out additional communication. But that will go right through the summer, and then, of course, the schools will be communicating as well, depending upon how their numbers fall out.
Okay, thank you. Could you speak for just a second about the high school, we're talking, go to the start times, the slide about the start times with flipping high school and elementary. Could you just remind us, I don't know if I have in my head clear what our neighboring county Fairfax does or what Loudon does, and I don't know if there are any other counties around us that have flipped their start times. Do, would anybody be able to speak to that just briefly?
Well, I can only say that in Fairfax, they did that inversion model with high school and elementary. And even though they had all that input, like for a year, there's still a lot of controversy about the elementary. There's, there's at least a fair, my understanding, I wouldn't stake my life on it, but from what I'm told, there are still some concerns from quite a number of elementary families about how that's all working out.
Meaning, they don't like the early, early time, getting kids early to school and coming home early?
You know, sometimes with the, whether it's light out or not, can be a factor, and some of those things are.
Is Loudon the same way? Did they flip?
That I don't know.
Okay. And my last question, it has to do with ESER funding, funds. Is there anything right now that the division could speak to about any, like, big ideas at this time that are kinda on the drafting board? I wondered if that's something we could talk about now, or if you wanna, if you don't wanna say, that's fine too. We have a hearing coming up, obviously, so if there were any, any ideas for, 87 million is a lot of money. And I know there are probably a lot of things that we could do. Obviously, we don't know all of the parameters yet from VDOE, but is there anything at this time that we could share with the public about what the division might be considering?
Sure. Let me correct one thing. I misspoke about Fairfax. They swapped the high school and middle school. Yeah, so.
So, their elementary is last, they go middle first, then high, then elementary? Okay.
So, again, that's not exactly what the research found, and so, I'll just leave it at that. Okay, so, back to our ESER money. So, we have some money set aside that you're aware of, that we've approved in the budget, that's been approved by the state. And I'll just kinda glance at Mr. Wallingford, just in case I say anything that's off the mark. But I can tell you that we've already had two things approved that you're aware, or you're at least aware that we were putting this forward. One was the buses. So, that's 4.75 million. Second one that's been approved is our new textbook adoption, which I wanna credit Mr. Wallingford and his direct work with the head of finance in the state, who's putting some of these protocols together to manage to get everything we're going to need, not pulled out of building budgets, but all that we need for textbooks, pre-K to 12, $11 million has been approved by the state out of those monies. And then, we will be putting in for approval, the Lexia, which is, okay, tentative approval. It's a good thing I still got this guy, right? He is gonna keep me straight right here till the last, okay. I wrote approved when I had that phone call with you guys, but it's not officially approved. Okay, so, hopefully later this summer, but preliminarily approved. So, the Lexia is 1.1 million. The computer recovery and refurbishment, that's where we have an external company who's gonna come in, 'cause when we bring all these computers back, some of them need, need work. And so, there's 2.5 million in that. And then, for the increased salary for the extended school year, some of these extra things that we're doing to help students, we have $2 million in there. So, we also, just as a reminder, we have to have 20% set aside for, excuse me, for lost learning. That's 17.5 million. So, if you take that out, there's about 49 million left. And again, we're getting that public input, but definitely Dr. McDade needs to weigh in on that remainder of the money. And I won't be putting anything through, like at the 11th hour, before I leave, to try to say, oh, I wanna spend 10 million on this. I will not be doing that. So, she should be in a good place with you on the availability of close to $50 million.
Wow. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for answering all my questions.
Okay, did anyone else have anything to add? Very good. That will complete that item on the agenda. We will now move on to, we have a first reading of some work Mr. Mike Murphy has done on behalf of the board regarding governance issues. Every summer, we go through some sort of governance reviews of our documents and trying to update things. This is on for information. This, folks, is 1703. And I have Mr. Murphy, Dr. Murphy, available by Zoom, and he is here to answer any questions, right? Remind the board, this is the first reading. Questions can continue on after this reading. Division Council will weigh in if she believes a question may have anything to do with something that we wanna do in closed session, because this does require, at some point, personnel issues and legal issues. So, if there's legal questions, we'll reserve those for answering by email and over the course of the summer until we come back to read this. But does anybody, after reviewing his materials, have any concerns or questions? Okay. Dr. Murphy, did you have anything to add to this? I know this is the first reading.
It is the first reading, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I'd just like to congratulate Dr. Walts. Well-deserved and well-earned, so congratulations. As the board is aware, this policy attempts to do a number of things. It combines professional standards and protocols for the board. It pulls in the Code of Ethics, it indexes the work that we did at the governance retreat to existing policies and procedures. In many ways, this is a how-to guide, if you will, or a set of guidelines to help the board in its own governance with other board members and with individual board members themselves. I've had quite a bit of input from several board members, and what I'd like to suggest and offer out as well is that we would, we would like to look at this as we go through the summer to make sure that the work you do at your July 10th retreat on working agreements with the superintendent also meshes with this policy as well. So, there's not a lot of urgency to do this. It's more important to do it right. So, open to questions and look forward to continuing this work.
Ms. Jessie?
I don't have a lot of questions. I just want to thank you for this index, because it does clarify a lot of items and is an easy read. I was under the impression that we were to read it and to get back with you later, because we won't be voting, am I right, Ms. McGowan? We're not gonna vote on this until later, right? Yeah, so we could, can we just send questions, our concerns to you, our suggestions to you, rather than going through all the items tonight?
Absolutely, Ms. Jessie. If, all board members know how to get ahold of me, I'd welcome your questions and your comments. What I'll do is put them together, go through them, and basically work them over. It is the first reading, so I would anticipate that you'll see this document again, probably before the final reading as well.
It just looks like an excellent document. I think it's for us on the board, it makes it easier for us to find things. Thank you.
Thank you very, Ms. Jen Wall?
I'm sorry. I'm really not trying to make us be here late. I have one question, Dr. Murphy, or, yeah. It's regarding the Code of Ethics that we are incorporating into the policy. If we have any suggestions to the Code of Ethics, should we also, at this time, I mean, through this process, make suggestions to that, or would that be a separate item that would come before the board, as if it's like a separate agenda item? Or could we say, like, you know, I think we should edit the Code of Ethics this way or that way?
My recommendation, as we're looking at a policy that deals directly with the Code of Ethics, and also eventually working agreements to deal with the board and superintendent's working relationship, that we look at them all together. I did note one point in the past, that with very few exceptions, as the Code of Ethics, the current Code of Ethics, is an attachment to this policy, unless I'm mistaken, Ms. McGowan, that you could edit that Code of Ethics at any time. There would be some minor changes, such as references in Policy 117 to the Code of Ethics. But by and large, it's a standalone document. You could change that now, you could change it later, you could change it as time went on. So, I think if you have suggestions, board members, that relate to Policy 117 or the Code of Ethics, now would be a good time to look at all of those.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I'm, I think that we should continue this discussion at a further time, because I view the Code of Ethics as a separate standalone document than what we're doing here. So, I would just ask this board to consider making it clear if we're going to just be looking at this policy or the Code of Ethics, how we really want to tackle this issue, 'cause we didn't go into this deciding to change the Code of Ethics as well as developing this policy. So, just something to consider, because I don't know, it's, to me, it seems like that opens another can of worms, which I don't have any problem opening. We, all about discussing. But I think we should be careful about how we're undertaking this process, if we wanna make it larger, or to stick to what we've already, already are doing. So, I think that's worth a conversation as a board. Obviously, not right now, but I do think that that goes to the heart of sort of what our initial retreat was a few weeks ago. So, that's all. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Murphy?
I think that knowing about the transition, knowing a little bit about the transition that the board is fixing to undergo with the new superintendent, I would encourage you to bite off small chunks and chew on them and process them. You can go back and revisit the Code of Ethics at any time. That does not mean that you shouldn't take notes and make references to the things that you'd want to change. But, in my ideal world, I would think that completion of Policy 117 to do with your relationships with each other and as a board would be a priority, followed by the working agreements that you come up with. And then, you can edit the Code of Ethics at any time. There's really no rush to that. You have an excellent Code of Ethics, and like all policies, regulations, they can be tweaked as you go.
Okay, great. Dr. Murphy, thank you very much for joining us, and we look forward to working with you over the course of the next few weeks and the summer to make these improvements. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Have a great evening. We're moving on next to a update from member Lori Williams of the Woodbridge District regarding her membership to the countywide racial and social justice commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna first remind the public, 'cause there seems to be a little bit of confusion. The school division is in partnership with Prince William County Government's Racial and Social Justice Commission. This is not a school division commission, and there is a resolution that was agreed upon this board to allow participation via partnership, because the school division has actually taken a lead on matters of equity, and that was part of what.
on matters of equity. And that was part of what the objective is of the Racial and Social Justice Commission, is to look at equitable issues. So I just wanted to remind the general public that it is not a School Division Commission, and that we are in partnership with it. And the next meeting of the Racial and Social Justice Commission will be tomorrow, actually, June 17 at 6:30 PM at the McCourt Building. These meetings will occur on the third Thursday of every month, even through the summer. I also, within that commission, sit on a subcommittee, the Education Subcommittee, which meets on the first Monday of the month. Those meetings will also continue over the summer, due to the fact that there is a report due to the County Board of County Supervisors in December. The last meeting we had was an Education Subcommittee meeting, which was last Monday at 6:30 at the Court Building, where we were presented updated information based on the division's disciplinary procedures and other equitable programs. More specifically, talked about OSMAP and as well as middle school programs that we are doing for disciplinary, sort of in the lines of remediation. It was an excellent presentation. I would like to thank Ms. Denise Hubner, Mr. Bill Bixby, and all the other staff that came out to present. When I say Prince William County Schools brought a team, they were the majority of the members present, the participants present at the Education Subcommittee meeting. But I will say, of all of the meetings I have attended so far, we are six months in. I think that that was the most positively received team that has come to present because of the breadth of information presented, and also because there's a lot of focus right now on disciplinary issues and being equitable to the entire student body and SROs, and also remediation. So our alternate programs for discipline, I think is a better way to put it. So no slight to Ms. Gosu, presented earlier on a completely different topic, but that is just where where the conversation is right now. In addition to the School Division presenting, Dr. Cozy Bailey, Dr. Reverend Cozy Bailey, who is the president of the NAACP, also presented, because the NAACP as well has a focus on education and an Education Subcommittee. I will say to the public, if you have comments or would like to attend a meeting, they are public. You can come speak at either the Subcommittee meetings, or you may come and speak before the commission. We welcome all comments in relation to racial and social justice issues. And I think it's important to hear from everyone, as well as the fact, the last thing I will say on this topic is that there will be listening sessions held in each of the magisterial districts by their representatives or commission members. And they're interested in hearing directly from the public. And a lot of those will occur over the summertime as well. And to sum it all up, again, this is not a School Division Commission. This is by the Board of County Supervisors. And I just have to tout us as a School Division for being in partnership with them, because we have been the equity champions in this county. I'm not sure if Ms. Jesse has anything to add. She also was at the last Education Subcommittee meeting.
I serve as the alternate, and I've attended two of those meetings. And we're into a situation now where we're really into these courageous conversations. And I think the public needs to realize that. And there's going to be some listening. And Dr. Reverend Bailey reminded us of what the, his mission was. And it was sort of a wake up call of what we're there for. And I wanted to also commend all of the presenters. I, the middle school program that is in play is something that I think the School Division needs to look at, because it reminds me of elementary, where we had class meetings. But this is something we talked about, this articulation. So I learned a lot at those meetings. But if you come to those meetings, the first one I came to was my first meeting. And, you know, I think like tonight, we have some, there are some, there are some very sensitive and courageous conversations that are going to have to be had. And it's going to happen whether we want to or not. But it's something that we really need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to board matters. Where did I start last time, guys? Anybody remember? We'll start with, which end? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did do a lot of events last week, visited a lot of schools, visited and brought flowers to some retired teachers and friends that I know. I didn't get to wear a mask tonight, but this was the one that a teacher made me, a retiring teacher, Kristy Barcalo, at Grant Park after 33 years. It's a black screen, basically Zoom signing on, connecting to audio. The fun of the year. Anyways, so I want to thank her for that and her 33 years of dedication to the school system. I do want to thank a group of people that I think often do not get enough credit for the work that they did. We, as a board, you know, direct and create and authorize policies and stuff. But the people on the ground, the principals, are the ones that have to have the face-to-face conversations with the teachers when they have to tell one of them that, no, you cannot be virtual. Or they had to be the one to say, I'm sorry, we had to have those tough tier one conversations. Or they're the ones that had to redo the master schedule a gazillion times. So with my last two minutes, want to thank my principals, starting with Montclair, Ms. Amanda Parks, and her Assistant Principal Danny Miller of Montclair. Ms. Susan Bevins, retiring after many years at Henderson Elementary, and her Assistant Principal Beth Knuckles. Thank you. At Williams Elementary, Ms. Dana Johnson and Vice Principal Shannon Adams, who is leaving and moving down to her family in South Carolina. Will miss Ms. Adams and her dedication. Jeff Devers and Charlotte Cantwell of Triangle Elementary, thank you. Dr. Andy Jackson, Ms. Shayna Robinson of Ashland Elementary, get a special thanks because they watched over my kids as well. Mr. Joe Mergo, although he did not have students in his school this year, he still had to get a school ready to run and be ready to open. Then, if you follow Potomac Local, did a great story about the innovation in the great school that is Potomac Shores Middle School. My friend, Ron Widdin, principal, and his Vice Principal Ivania Cireo, he is retiring after many years of service to our school system. I will miss Ron, good friend, someone I always could go to and have very candid conversations. He'll be staying around and mentoring in the district. Ms. Amanda Whitney and her Vice President Leslie Lido, thank you at Swans Creek for your service. Mr. RJ Luciotti, former AP of Ashland, now principal for the last couple of years at Patty, with his Vice Principal Tiffany Turner Bell. Ms. Starr Gambi and Sean Bowe had to take over at midpoint a couple of times during this year for turnovers in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you for your service. Ms. Maria Ramadan, Ms. Walker, Mr. Riddle, Dr. Alexander, Graham Park Middle School, thank you for your service. Mr. Kevin Smith, Brian Coleman, Ms. Latonya Haskins of Potomac Middle School, thank you. Mr. Brandon Bowles, Stacy Norwood, Lorraine Sandler, Regina Nash, Christina Cotton of Potomac High School, thank you. Mr. Bob Icorn, Megan Baker, Ralph Block, Amy Cole, Inmar Romero, Brandon Neal, Jody Pankowski of the Nontraditional School, thank you. And then, Mr. Richard Martinez, Dakota Beach, James Smith, Jennifer Chapman, John Geisenger, and Diane Maloney of Forest Park, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good year.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. That was a busy few weeks. I loved being able to see the different schools celebrate graduating from kindergarten, fifth grade, and eighth grade. Thank you to the schools who invited me along to celebrate. And I was sorry to miss those who were scheduled at the same time of the high school graduations. I loved going to the high school graduations. They, I was so impressed at the time and effort that staff put into that momentous day. I loved watching the students from Patriot, Brentsville District High School, Battlefield, and Unit Reed walk across the stage. Congratulations to all the seniors. Today is a bittersweet day. I just want to echo again my sincere thanks to Dr. Waltz and Mr. Iman for everything, for the dedication to our county, and, you know, the legacy that you guys are leaving. And I also wanted to take a minute to thank all Prince William County staff for this incredibly difficult year. I know it was a lot of effort. And I'm just very grateful from those even in the schools, to those in the Kelly Center, just very grateful for all of your time and efforts. So thank you.
Ms. Wu.
Graduation, wow. That was awesome. I was able to go to Patriot, Freedom, Battlefield, Unit Reed, Pace West, and Governor's School Innovation Park graduation ceremonies. It's one of the most important things that we do, culmination of all of our efforts from day one when students enter our doors. I want to thank Mr. Mulgrew and his team for their extraordinary effort in getting, you know, graduations up and running. I know that was last minute, just because we were going back and forth with what we could and couldn't do. I really appreciate all the effort. And huge shout out to everybody who worked on that. I also was able to go to some fifth grade promotions and eighth grade advancements at a bunch of schools in my district. And I missed some due to some scheduling conflicts. But it was just exciting and wonderful to see the staff cheer the students. And there were a lot of smiles and some tears from teachers and students and parents. And it was just, it was just wonderful. So thank you to everybody for the successful end of a year. Words I heard often at graduation were persistence and perseverance and resilience. And I wanted to highlight tonight, with the remainder of my time, a student who embodies all of those adjectives. And his name is Justin Brown. And he is a graduate of Battlefield Class of 2021. As a toddler, he developed a cancerous brain tumor. And his mother writes that at that time of his diagnosis, all we prayed for was our, for our son to live. Never in our wildest dreams could we have imagined what this boy has accomplished. Not only did Justin persevere through serious medical and health challenges, he graduated from high school, from Battlefield, with 51 college credits, which means he is just a few classes short of earning his associate's degree in information technology. Due to the online moving of school, it was difficult for him to complete some of those final credits in the online environment, because the surgery, the cancer and the surgery left him legally blind and one eye. His mother writes that 45 plus total hours of brain surgery and six weeks of daily sedated radiation can't stop him. He continues to experience aches and pains, takes multiple daily medications and injections, faces serious risk of setback and hospitalization if he were to become ill. This is what his mother writes. Life has never been easy for Justin, yet he never complains. So Justin is an avid and passionate lover of all things sports. And he played basketball and baseball as a younger student. But when those sports became too risky for his health, he was taken under the wing by Mr. Buckfa at Reagan Middle School, who runs the archery program there, a wonderful man and a wonderful program. And he continued to support Justin and other students. He also helps at Battlefield High School. He saw Justin's potential, his love of sports, and the fact that he couldn't participate in those other sports anymore, and took him under his wing. He saw the need that Justin had to find and excel at a new sport, and who, and continued to diligently coach Justin in archery through middle and high school. And now Justin is a world champion archer. And he will compete in his final tournament as a high schooler this August. Mr. Buckfa's efforts were life changing for him. So I also want to honor Mr. Buckfa. So I personally congratulate Justin for showing resilience and perseverance in all that he has accomplished. One, on graduating magna cum laude from Battlefield. Two, on achieving a CACET, that's the specialty program there, gold medal graduate for his achievements within the CACET specialty program. Three, on his achievement as a world champion archer. And four, on his incredible determination to pursue the challenge of seeking an associate's degree in IT while still in high school, all while facing ongoing significant personal health challenges. Justin, we are all so proud of you for your future. And may you continue to achieve every goal you set for yourself. And lastly, to Mr. Iman and Dr. Waltz, one more time, happy retirement, and thank you for everything that you have done for Prince William County Schools. We're going to miss you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by giving a great big giant thank you and shout out to all of our staff who survived this pandemic, but especially to all of my Title I school staff. When I think about staff members, and of course, I'm biased, and proudly so, of my Title I school staff who went out and went above and beyond, I mean, above and beyond, manipulative, sent home, daily calls, check-ins. Some schools even had teachers crafting desks and handing them to families for students who did not have desks. Just gave their all and then some, all year long, every day. You know, I can attest to this. My son goes to a Title I school proudly. I can't say that I would send him anywhere else. I am just amazed and really owe a debt of gratitude and humbled to be able to represent all of you on the board. As your board member, I just don't have enough words to say how incredibly amazing you were this year for all of the families that you serve. I mean, just absolutely outstanding. Been to a bunch of drive-through promotion ceremonies for fifth grade and eighth grade at my schools. Again, all so different, but really, everybody went out, even in the rain, to, to, you know, congratulate these students and their families. It was amazing to see everyone. And of course, attended multiple graduations, I think nine or 10 in total. I want to give a special shout out to Independence Nontraditional, who held three separate graduation ceremonies on the same day. And to all of those students who showed up to receive their diplomas and walk across the stage. And for all those who don't congratulate, who didn't, congratulations on your accomplishments. For those students who didn't make it across that line, please don't give up. Please continue. There is summer school. You can re-enroll, most of you. I hope that you will continue that that journey until you receive your diploma. I also want to say that we, it is, we're still in a pandemic. And I am one of those parents that is team virtual for next year, because our young students are not yet vaccinated or eligible for vaccinations if you're an elementary schooler. And I think it's important that we continue to look out for those students and also not forget the tremendous progress that we made technologically and advancements that we made in education, just because we're going back to what someone called normal, that we don't forget all of the advancements that we made with the virtual applications and all of the money that was spent, all the products that we used, that they don't go sit on some shelf because everybody wants to go in a building, and that we continue to utilize them. Because our students are going to be digital learners. They're going to live in a digital world. So everybody can return to normal as much as you want, but that's not going away. And I don't want anybody to forget that. And I know I've run out of time, but the last thing I want to say is, I want to read a quote, because when I saw this quote, it's a very famous quote by Teddy Roosevelt, but I think it sums up to me both Dr. Waltz and Keith Iman's contribution and contributions. And before I do that, I just want to say, Dr. Waltz, it has been an honor. And a little joke, those who may not know, I actually asked Dr. Waltz, once upon a time, to eat some cricket-based empanadas, which he gladly did, did not have to do as a superintendent. So it's a little fun fact, because where are we without our humor? And I also want to thank you too, personally, because you are the only person, for those who don't know, my son was born the same time I was elected to the board. So he was unofficially dubbed the school board baby for many, many years. He was here this evening. And just as a personal thank you from our family, you were the first person to get him in a pool. So anybody who doesn't believe that Dr. Waltz has a heart of gold with kids, the kids know that Dr. Waltz has a heart of gold. And that quote in the video was also from another student who I saw on the way to that meeting that day, who told me very specifically to tell you, that you will always be remembered as the coolest superintendent ever. So your legacy is secure in many ways, sir. And I will say this and then be quiet. So it is the man in the arena. And the quote goes, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong, how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly or errors, or who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who actually does strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows, in the end, the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daringly great, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And that is what I think of when I think of your legacy. nor defeat." And that is what I think of when I think of your legacy. So thank you, Dr. Waltz, for all of your service.
Ms. Jess.
Thank you. To all the teachers and the kids, the one word that we heard, I heard quite frequently was the word exhaustion. So rest, put your feet up. You don't have those Michael Jordan flip flops like Dr. Waltz. But I just want to say thank you for everything. I went to the high school graduations, and the high school graduations were very different. Dr. Latif was, we did a shoe, I think we figured out which pair of shoes you liked best?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He was sitting on stage analyzing which pair of shoes he liked best. So it was fun. At Woodbridge High School, I want to thank, I always look at the readers, who reads all the names. And Carlos Castro, he read every single name at Woodbridge High. Amazing. It was just amazing. And I think, and I probably, you guys know better, but I'm told they timed this, right, Mr. Mulgrew? Everything is timed. And it moves, it's like tch, tch, tch. And I wanted to also say that at Cogan High School, that I loved the photographs of the kids as you came in. It was 90 degrees in the shade. But I, at Cogan High School, I wanted to say to Dr. Waltz especially, that, you know, Delaney, I've grown up with Delaney. I've seen all the baby pictures and I've watched her and watched her become a young lady. And, you know, she and I have this little thing, because I really admire her and I admire you, because it's very difficult being a superintendent's daughter. And you guys, you and your wife did a great job with her. So I wanted to say thank you for that. To traditional schools, the three ceremonies were great. And I also liked the picture booth. They had the outside picture booths where kids could go out with their families and do the pictures. The traditional, the drive-throughs, I tried to make as many. I had some scheduling problems, but I will tell you that those one that I was able to attend, again, these people really went all out. And finally, as a closing note on Cogan Elementary, I want to say to Dr. Waltz that one of the things that you and I came together on was Cogan. Who would think that I would vote for a swimming pool? I'm telling you, I thought I could not go back into the Black American community because they want to know, Lily Jessie, are you kidding me? Are you voting for a swimming pool? Because I was not allowed to go to one. But that's one of the reasons I voted for it, because you brought those second graders and third graders and those kids in those lower-income families. And so I want to thank you for Cogan and all that you've done. So in closing, have a great summer. And I appreciate all of the teachers. You were amazing. It was just plain amazing. We put you in situations that you were so fearful. But I definitely appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston.
I'm going to pass.
Okay, Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had an opportunity to go to Battlefield, Pace West, Hilton, Osborne Park, Cogan, Patriot, Unity Reed, and Independence. They're just their first graduation. All the ceremonies were amazing. It was emotional for me because I am an elementary teacher. And I don't know necessarily what happens after my, it's sixth grade in my school, my sixth graders leave us. And so it was, it made me very reflective. So I think the high school teachers, you guys are very lucky to be able to bid your students farewell. Want to thank all of the people who did put in all this work. Mr. Mulgrew, I'm sure it was just constant. But those were great ceremonies. And because I was reflecting on getting kids to that graduation point, I want to say something to the students. So if you graduated this year, congratulations. You made it. And I wish you luck in the future, whatever you're choosing, whether it's college, career, going into the military, you're going to take a gap year, whatever your future plans are, I wish you well. If you're still in the school system with us, I wish you well as well. You deserve the break. I want you to put your feet up as well, because everybody was working hard. I know virtual education was a challenge for some kids and some loved it. And as we come into the fall, I'm hopeful that students will be able to speak up for their needs. And for those students who have moved from maybe elementary to middle or middle to high, and if you're struggling at all, remember that there's a whole host of people who have been teaching you since kindergarten or even preschool, who care about what happens to you. And if you find yourself needing a little extra support, maybe reaching out to a favorite teacher in your past would be a good way to help you project into your future. I know that I don't know what happens to my students necessarily unless they catch up with me. So good luck into the future graduates. And for the students who have the fall to look forward to, I wish you well. Teachers and staff, thank you so much for all of your hard work. For this, this year was truly different. And as Ms. Jessie said, you all put your feet up as well. I wish you the best as we go into the summer. Rest, relax, and we'll come back in the fall better than ever. Thank you to the board. This has been an interesting year. I am grateful for your thoughts, your, just the ability to talk about all the things that we've had to go through together. It's been truly an experience that so few people are really going to have any experience with. And I'm going to get a little weird here, but I love you all. Thank you so much. I know y'all are like, what? Dr. Waltz and Ms. Iman, I wish you the best in whatever you do after this. I am grateful for all of the service that you've had to our children. And thank you for everything. Good night, everyone. Oh, my gosh. Yeah. So we're going to wash our hands. We're going to wear our masks when necessary, following the Virginia Department Health and CDC, when necessary. We're gonna, what else are we gonna do? Oh, I don't know about the distancing anymore. It changes all the time. And if you don't feel well, go to the doctor and stay home. Wash your hands, Dr. Latif.
Excellent, excellent. We must finish on that note because that has gotten us to this point. Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. Gentlemen, can you just put up the slide that I showed earlier today, Mike and those guys in the back? And I'm not going to go through what I went through in the earlier reception, but I'll talk about this in just a second. We have wonderful traditions. Commencement is a wonderful tradition here in America, and it's obviously a great tradition here in our school system. Dr. Waltz attended every single one of them, shared his thoughts and highlights of each school with them over the years, shared quotes and inspiring words for our students, as he always does. And it was an absolute joy, as you heard from our members, to go out there and see these students walk across that stage with incredible shoes, as Ms. Jessie points out. But it was wonderful to do that. This picture up here is the beginning of an incredible tradition, and it is the origin of the word academy or academics. This is Plato's school in Athens. This is painted by Raphael during the Italian Renaissance, and it hangs on a wall. And it is the wall, actually, in the Vatican, one of the apartments there. You have Plato and Aristotle in the middle. You have Socrates, and you have other great characters in Greek history, Pythagoras, and scholars, and Ptolemy, and Euclid, astronomers, and mathematicians. You know, I recognize this photo as a way to sort of honor and tribute both Dr. Waltz and Keith Iman for the work they've done. First, the beauty of the photograph and this school that Plato started, you know, reflects the beauty of our schools and the work they've done to put our 25, 27 buildings together and renovate all of our other buildings all the time, putting them on a capital improvement plan. They believe that the facilities inspired both the children and the teachers, and we thank them for that. They, Dr. Waltz believed dearly and deeply that debate, discussion, and study was the way to improve knowledge and improve our graduation rates. And he came here and instituted programs such as, you know, we're not pushing homework for homework's sake, but homework that honed skills that improved our students' abilities to reason, discuss civilly, debate, and study, and love learning. And if you get anything out of this photograph, it is a group of folks who loved learning, taught each other, mentored each other. This is the way in which he and Keith ran the school division incredibly. It's a great photo for anyone, a great, you know, piece of art that if anyone wants to study, just look up the School of Athens, which is what the name of this painting is. And Plato and Aristotle stand at the center of that, in the same way Dr. Waltz and Keith Iman stood at the center of our last 16 years and helped us get through this, get through this time. I'll finish with a quote because Dr. Waltz has so many Loves quotes. And it's a famous quote, everyone knows this in the room. If you don't, you should. Teachers have three Loves: the love of learning, the love of learners, and the love of bringing the first two Loves together. And so, Dr. Waltz, you and Keith have done that, and this community is forever grateful. We wish you all the best. I'm excited to know that Delaney's going to the University of Virginia. She will walk that lawn and do the tradition of commencement. And as we say there, wear the honor of honors as she goes down that lawn in her commencement. But again, the reverence I have and the reason I chose to sort of be in this position is because of my love of education and learning. And you certainly and Keith have shown that throughout your entire career. And the highest degree of respect for you all, and wish you all the best. At this time, the school board meeting will be adjourned. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman.